Good evening, everyone. Ooh, the sound is much better in here. Good evening. It is 6:02 on August 1st and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order and ask that everyone please rise for the Pledge of Legions. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll? Present.
Mr. Kareem.
Present.
Mr. Lopez. Mrs. Moore.
Present.
Dr. Nabars Martinez. Mr. Noweski.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez. Ms. Williams. Mrs. Willis.
Present. I know that--
Or Ms. Present.
Thank you. I know that Ms. Williams is here in the building, so she will be joining us shortly. Dr. Nabars Martinez and Dr. Rodriguez had pre-planned opportunities this evening, so that is why they are not with us, so I apologize for that. So we will be seven members strong today. That brings us to reading the District Mission Statement this evening. Mr. Noweski, do you-- Wait. Did you read it last time? Okay. Mr. Noweski, do you mind reading the District Mission Statement, please?
Certainly. The mission of the Lansing School District is to provide a high-quality education in a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to live purposeful and fulfilling lives.
Thank you. That brings us on to see if there's any additions from the-- additions for the agenda this evening from board members. Okay. Seeing none. That brings us to presentations this evening. This first presentation this evening will be on libraries. I would like to invite Ms. Benavides and any members of her team that will be presenting this evening. Mr. Superintendent, did you have any preamble for this? All right. We haven't used these mics before. All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Jessica Benavides. I'm the Deputy Superintendent of Schools for those in the community that are watching. I brought with me a team of people that are here to talk to you this evening about a very important topic: the libraries in the Lansing School District. Here we are. Got it. Here we are. All right. I'm going to take a few minutes to kind of go over our decision-making process in which I will announce and introduce the wonderful panel that I have before me as a team. We're here this evening to talk a little bit about the decision-making process around our libraries. I know I wasn't here a couple of weeks ago when my wonderful team came and presented on libraries, so I wanted an opportunity to come this night-- tonight to really talk about our decision-making process and what our plans are to move forward. One of the things I'd like to talk with all of you about this evening is our plan for literacy. So I do want to make sure that everyone understands that this was not solely a decision about libraries. This is an overarching decision about overall programming in the Lansing School District. So I have brought with me our Director of Instruction for K-8 specializing in literacy and social studies, Heather Guerra. And we will also be talking about art, music, and PE, and of course, libraries, the reason we're here this evening. We are going to talk about the database decisions that were made and what data it is that we used. One of the things, of course, is our comprehensive literacy instruction, again with Heather Guerra. And we will also be talking about our school index scores with Dr. Peyton Stalter, who is here. He's our REAP grant director and also is our liaison for our partnership schools. We'll also talk about our current staffing and needs, also models across the state. And then, of course, our wonderful, exciting news about three of our buildings that are being built. So I have brought with me our wonderful principals from those buildings. I have with us Dr. Nicole Beard from Willow. I also have brought with me Kim Johnson Ray, our Senior Director of Middle Schools. Nicole Holliday had-- something that she had to tend to this evening and so then couldn't be with us, so Kim is standing in her place. And then I've also brought with me Principal Dan Gowell from Luton. So really pleased to have this wonderful team with me this evening to give you a comprehensive look on libraries and our decision-making around this topic. So without further ado, I'm going to pass this over to Heather to talk to us about our comprehensive literacy plan. I thought this would be especially interesting to the board and to the community because there's been lots of questions around what is the Lansing School District's literacy plan? How are we addressing reading in the Lansing School District? And we know that access to books, libraries, and librarians is a part of that. And so she is really going to lay the groundwork for us around literacy and the plan for kindergarten through eighth grade in the Lansing School District.
Thank you. As Jessica said, I'm Heather Guerra, Director of Instruction, and I focus primarily on literacy and social studies. So a couple of things I want to just give some background knowledge on this or background information. Lansing is a district of opportunities. We have so many opportunities to brighten the lives of our students and the, really, the wellness of our community with the work that we do in the schools. So coming into Lansing two years ago, so this will be my third year in the Lansing District as Director of Instruction, one of my first questions was, what do we do for literacy? And I'm going to give you a little caveat. I could bore you because I could talk for hours about literacy and good literacy instruction, and I'm like the cheerleader for readers. So I'm going to try to keep it brief and just let you know the overview of historical-- what we did in Lansing, why we made decisions that we did, and then how the decisions that we were making really fit into bringing our library and those literacy resources to light and how we could best utilize those, again, to enhance the lives of our students. So for our beginnings, we didn't really have a state-- like a statement to say, this is how we teach reading in Lansing. We had a program that we used, but many of our teachers were trained differently in how to teach reading and had different views on how to teach reading. So we really needed to come up with a comprehensive district literacy plan on how are we going to create a systematic approach to supporting our students and ensuring they are literate, moving forward, leaving our district at the 12th grade level, able to, you know, contribute positively to society and grow as people as well. So we started with identifying what are our-- what are our beliefs in literacy? What does it mean to be a good reader? And then what would that look like in our instructional practice on how we're teaching kids to read? So we created a plan that is grounded in the science of reading. It provides K-12 instructional coherence so that we can really work on evaluating the effectiveness of what we're doing and making adjustments as we go. And it folds in all of the research on the essential practices in literacy instruction. And that is something that has been, if you've been around in schools in Michigan for a while, that has been a huge task through Mesa, the Mesa Task Force, and the GELN Network. So they came together and identified what does essential literacy practices look like at the district level, at the building level, and in the classrooms? And how do you connect all of those pieces of your district to ensure that you have a comprehensive literacy plan? So Lansing's comprehensive literacy plan includes instructional materials and resources, professional learning investments, so really looking at how are we helping support our teachers in their practice, initiatives that foster a culture of literacy and access to literature. And everything in our plan is, like as I said before, grounded in the science of reading. And this holistic approach to literacy provides a pathway to developing students as readers, writers, speakers, and listeners. And this pathway doesn't live only within our print-rich classrooms and environments. It includes providing access points within the classrooms, the school buildings, and across the district. So we're not just talking about, we teach reading inside the classroom. If you're a kindergartner, you get taught read-- no, if you're a kindergartner, you see a print-rich environment in your classroom, within your building, within the district. We have opportunities to provide access to that literacy learning. This is where I get the nerdy part of me, where I talk about strong literacy skills equates access and access leads to equity, and the impact of equity for access is lifelong for our students, our families, and our communities in Lansing. So I'm proud to share with you how our Lansing team worked together to intentionally create an instructionally coherent district literacy plan that embedded that science of reading research and envelops the essential practices in literacy at all grade levels. This is where I'm going to highlight the fact that access to text and using our literacy and our library resources is a crucial component of the district literacy plan. And our team was committed to providing students access to abundant texts through our classroom-level libraries, building libraries, and you're going to hear about our library houses and other district-level resources. I worked collaboratively with the Reading League of Michigan, the Ingham County ISD, and their literacy leaders there to create a team in Lansing. So we started with our school district vision, our literacy vision, and we established a team in winter of 2022 comprised of literacy teachers, instructional coaches, classroom teachers, building-level administrators, and district-level administrators. And the purpose of this team was to create the district literacy vision that focused on a K-12 continuum. We always hear that kids in K-2, it's all about learning to read, and then by grade three, four, you're reading to learn. The research, really relevant research and recent research, has proven that to be partially true. And so that was something that we really took to heart as our literacy team and our learning together, was that we're not about just teaching kids how to decode words and to be word callers. We're teaching them to be thinkers. We're teaching them to be questioners. We're teaching them to be speakers. And in doing that, we have to provide them access not just to decodable instruction and reading text that is decodable, but also language acquisition and learning vocabulary and building background knowledge. And you do that by having high-quality read-aloud materials. Kids in first and second grade are students, they're not going to be able to read those texts independently, but it's still going to broaden their knowledge base so that when they are able to read independently, they have the background knowledge that leads them to be skilled-level readers and comprehenders. So that was really important for us, to not just have a K-2 decoding program, but also have that knowledge piece with it. So our literacy vision encompasses a comprehension approach to building skills and confidence in the reading and writing domains. And this-- this thought process really focused on being a responsive-- having responsive literacy instruction, which again is modeled through all of those pieces that Michigan Department of Ed puts out and says, these are best practices in instruction and developing curriculum continuums for our students. So I just wanted to share that that does-- it aligns with that and really focuses on the monitoring and improvement of that so that we are constantly looking at, how are we doing for our students? Are our students learning? Are we being effective in our instruction? And then what-- what continuous improvements can we make? So I wanted to give you a little bit of background about the science of reading, and this is where it was a lot of the learning because kids don't just learn to read by being sat in front of text, right? We know that the science of reading-- reading is a complex process. You have the process of learning to decode, and then you have the process of language comprehension. And within language comprehension, you are working on identifying, what does this word mean? What is the prefix? What is the suffix? And we've got morphology and etymology, and all of those pieces come together to be a skilled reader and be a skilled comprehender. And that's our goal, our outcomes. And so we looked at-- we learned together on the simple view of reading. We learned about Scarborough's reading rope, how those two pieces come together. And we also really focused on tier-one instruction. And so we talk about that a lot in instruction. That is the instruction that every child gets. Every child has access to. These are the grade-level standards that we teach. And then how do we respond when our students have not mastered the skills at that grade-level tier-one instruction? Then we work on some prevention. What we see a lot in districts is that we're constantly trying to intervene our way out of a tier-one problem. So we're-- we're trying to get kids to be readers, but we're missing really essential components of reading instruction. And then we have to go back and help them and provide interventions for them because they missed that in grade one or they missed that in grade two. So the whole intention is be very comprehensive, that we're not missing any of those pieces so that we can ensure our students are learning to read so that they can be skilled comprehenders later. So they developed consensus. The team came together, and we did a lot of learning together because if we don't all believe the same thing or have the same set of knowledge, it's going to be really difficult to implement something or move forward with decision-making. So we did learning together and came to consensus on, this is what we believe is important for our students to have as expectations for being readers, right? And then from consensus on how students learn to read, we went to consensus on, now we have decided this is how they learn to read, so this is how we will teach them to learn to read. And what will that scaffolding look like throughout each of the grade levels? And this is where-- sorry, I didn't mix the slide here. Or I'm going-- this is where we talked about instructional coherence. So when we're talking about a district literacy vision and having kids transition from that learning to read, and now I am reading about all of these new concepts and topics in math and science and social studies that I'm making connections to my learning, we had to ensure that we were consistent across our buildings. We also wanted to make sure that if you were a second grader at Post Oak, you were getting the same expectations for second grade as if you were a second grader at Avril or a second grader at Willow. So we wanted to ensure we had a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And that really comes down to evaluating the effectiveness of our programs. We can't compare apples to oranges. We can't improve apples and oranges if we're all not working with oranges, right? So we needed to have that guaranteed and viable curriculum across the district and have consensus on what that looks like, what teaching that looks like. So this team really spent a lot of time learning about that together and then taking that learning and communicating across the district. So we really worked on a train-the-trainer model with our literacy plan, and we had these pocketed groups of literacy leaders that then would go out and work with teachers in the district. They also presented to our building leaders so that our building leaders had an understanding of what were the common expectations in our literacy vision for that instructional coherence across the district. A lot of this really comes down to a systematic approach to teaching, right? So this is just another example of that reading rope and the science of reading. So we've got that word recognition, having our phonological awareness, our decoding and sight word recognition, and how that marries with your background knowledge, your vocabulary, your language structure, verbal reasoning. This-- this graphic that I'm showing you is not just about teaching English or students whose first language is English. This is how you would teach students to read, no matter what background they're coming from. So when we're introducing them to the language of English, this works for all of our learners in Lansing, all of our multilingual learners, our English-language learners, all of those. So it was really important, and it just is a great example of highlighting and making it an easy understanding of how these two pieces of instruction come together to get a fluent word-level reader and comprehender. So with instructional coherence and looking at Lansing as a K-2-- or K-12 instructional system, we really need to work on, okay, we have a vision for our student experience. Now what will we use as instructors? And we need to make sure that what we are providing for our teachers is high-quality instructional resources. So we then took this team and split out into steering committees to research on high-quality instructional materials that also followed the science of reading and embedded all of that within its instructional practices. Because this is what we've deemed as important. We know the research supports us. We know that the state of Michigan is really encouraging us to look at this type of thing. We know that our state standards surround all of this, encompass all of this. So we spent time looking at high-quality instructional resources. And in the last school year, the 23-24 school year, our steering committee worked to identify that we are going to be a structured literacy district, and then we are going to adopt high-quality instructional materials that follow that structured literacy model, incorporating both skills and knowledge. So the decoding piece and the vocabulary comprehension piece. And then going from choosing those high-quality instructional resources, our next step is bringing in our teachers and ensuring that they are getting the training and the learning and also our building leaders, the training and learning so that we can support each other and continue that collaboration towards constant systematic improvement. It's a continuous improvement. Like, we're never going to arrive in education. We aren't. We shouldn't. We shouldn't get to a point ever where we say we're done learning. We are always going to be lifelong learners, and that's really what this goal is. If our students don't have access to literacy, if they are not literate, they're done growing, and that's not what we want. So we wanted to really emphasize that and have a program and a system that goes K-12 to support that. So with the instructional coherence-- I mentioned this already-- that we adopted a structured literacy model. So we are very intentional with having an explicit systematic approach to teaching the grade-level content standards. This also aligns with our district workshop model of direct instruction, where the teacher is providing information to the students, the students practice that information, and they do something with it. And then we evaluate their learning to determine what is our next step. Did they learn the materials? Great, we're moving on. Do we have some areas where we need to do some reteaching? What will that reteaching or small group instruction look like? And then how do we, again, monitor their progress throughout that? So structured literacy really aligns with that and helps to provide a model for all of our classroom teachers. And it's something, again, that can be used K-12. Once we adopted structured literacy, as I mentioned, our steering committee went through and looked at high-quality instructional materials that are researched-based, they're aligned with the science of reading research, they have the data to support their effectiveness in their initial work with students. And so we piloted this year EL Education and Amplify CKLA, Core Knowledge Language Arts. We piloted both of those K-8. We had pilot teachers. We had panelists that came in, and they shared their knowledge, they shared what they like about it, what's working for students. And then after practicing with both curricular tools and having training on them, then we made a decision and made a recommendation to move forward with purchasing Amplify CKLA. And so we are using Amplify CKLA-K5 and Amplify ELA-68. And again, it aligns with our systematic coherent approach to teaching literacy. With that, this is where we align with the libraries and looking at that holistic approach to teaching reading. So when we talk about that educator experience, we really-- not only do we want to have training in the use of our curricular materials, but we really want to have that expertise in what decisions am I making during my instruction? And how do I get the tools in my tool belt, right? We call those as teachers, to know what's my next move for students based on what I'm evaluating happening in my classroom? And so this is where we looked at the essential practices in literacy. And these, again, as I mentioned, they're coming from a Mesa Task Force. They've been around for a while. They are derived in the science of reading and science of teaching reading. And the best practices in literacy essentials and what I love about them and what our teachers have appreciated in our steering committee is really getting-- gaining that understanding of what would this look like at the district level? How does the district put in systems to support an instructionally cohesive district literacy plan? What is the responsibility at the district level to support this so that it's not teachers are working in isolation or on an island and don't have the supports? And then there's coaching practices. This is all about classroom instructional practices. How do we, as a district, support our teachers? How do we go in and improve not only literacy instruction, but improve access to literature, to text, and ensure that our students have that abundant resources in front of them? And then the next piece is, at the classroom level, how do we ensure that our classrooms are equipped with all of this? So libraries fall right into that. It's really about how are we creating that cohesive K-12 system? So I wanted to break that down and share some of the things that I thought really aligned to this-- this piece of our libraries and really helped to support that this approach that we're looking at and recommending for the changes in some of our systematic approaches really still supports the use of libraries, having libraries in our buildings, but also identifies the responsibilities at each level because that's that systematic approach. So looking at it from the district level, there are eight essential practices in the district level. Three of them really align to the library piece or just-- and we could-- we could take the word "library" out and really replace that with "access to text", right? Because that's what libraries provide us with. They provide us access to abundant reading materials. So at the district level, the responsibility would be to ensure that we have learning environments that explicitly show a strong commitment to literacy. Are we looking at the resources that we have? And are we allocating those resources adequately to show that we have-- we see literacy as important? We see access to text as one of the most important pieces. Practice number seven: adequate, high-quality instructional resources that are maintained and utilized. So are we identifying instructional resources that we can use? And so when I-- when I'm talking about instructional resources, I'm not referring to just the program that we use to teach reading. I'm also referring to what other opportunities do students have to learn about-- in Amplify CKLA, second grade, they read about the Great Wall of China. That's one of the contexts, the stories that they read about. What happens when you read to a second grader about the Great Wall of China? Typically, that knowledge starts to create questions, and they want to learn more. How do they learn more? By ensuring that we have those resources available to them if they want to learn more about the Great Wall of China or the why the Great Wall of China is no longer there, right? So really ensuring that we are aligning our resources. One of the things I'd love to mention about this is, at the district level, we are committed to finding ways to supplement those resources. And so we did apply for two grants, and I'm proud to say we did receive both of those grants, which has helped us to provide access to additional resources. All of our kindergarten and first-grade classrooms in the district-- 75 classrooms in the district have been awarded a grant of over 400 books of a diverse classroom library. So those classrooms are also getting, in addition to the high-quality instructional materials that we'll be using for tier-one instruction, they're also getting 400 books to just have access to see and read and have more access to text. We also were awarded a grant through the state of Michigan that helped us to purchase these high-quality materials because our team did put together this targeted literacy plan, and we presented it to the state of Michigan on why we believe this high-quality instructional resource is important for us to align our instructional coherence K-12, and we were awarded that grant as well. So at the district level, we are taking this very seriously of how are we ensuring that we are providing the resources for our-- our building leaders, for our parents, for our teachers to have access to abundance of text? If we look now at the educator experience selection, again, with the essential practices in literacy instruction, we've got coaching practices. So this is all about how are we-- So, this is all about how are we going into our classrooms and supporting teachers in the implementation of these high-quality instructional materials? How are we ensuring that we are supporting them, that we have access to it, that we provide teachers with the materials that we're talking about training? So, practice number five, there are eight coaching practices aligned in here. And so, practice number five is our literacy coaches spend most of their time working with teachers to enhance teacher practice and improve student learning. They make effective use of their time by having a multifaceted approach to coaching. So, they are working with implementing the new curricular tools. So, again, we're not just giving teachers training from the company that we've purchased the resource from, and they're going to their one-day training and now go ahead and teach that and be really effective with it and let's make sure our kids learn. We're saying, "We're in this with you. We've got coaches to support you that are identified solely for the purpose of helping support you in implementing this tool." And I guess I should mention this part too, and I didn't even think about this, but I applied for a grant through the ISD, and we have been awarded an early literacy coach from the ISD that we were able to hire and have as a literacy coach in our district. And so, we have hired a coach that will be supporting this. And then, we also have the READ grant that supports literacy instruction K-12, and we have instructional coaches already within the district that will be supporting this as well. One of the things that we have been working on this summer is realigning some of that READ grant resources, so that we have more opportunities to have coaches. So, right now, we currently will have four coaches that will be supporting the implementation of this tool, but the goal is to have six coaches. So, hiring two more coaches, and we do have the funds to be able to do that. So, that is coming. And then, practice number seven, effective literacy coaches are an integral member of the literacy leadership teams at the school and district level, and that's been one of the points of pride of our steering committee and our literacy team, is that our instructional coaches, they are invested in this work, and they come with some really great knowledge to share. So, this isn't a, this is a collaborative team. We come together, they share their learning, they learn together, and then they go, "How can we make sure that our teachers know this?" And they create these plans to do this. So, again, there's your building level of essential instructional practices in literacy. And now, we're going to look at the classroom level. There are 10 classroom-level resources, or I'm sorry, 10 classroom essential practices. The really cool thing about the essential practices is that it is now broken down into essential practices for pre-K, essential practices K-3, essential practices 4-5, middle school, and on. And then, in high school, it becomes content literacy. So, you're really talking about, "Now, I'm reading to learn," right? So, in here, a lot of, six and seven, practice six and seven are very similar in the K-2, the 3-5, and the 6-8. And practice number six is research-informed and standards-aligned writing instruction. And this is where our coaches come in. We are ensuring that we have instructional coaches to support that, but also, when we do writing instruction, you don't do writing instruction in isolation. We write, and when we write, we create text. We create pieces of text that you read. So, with writing instruction, we want to make sure we have anchor texts. We want to have examples of good writing pieces. So, this is where, again, the district is supporting that by saying, "Here are really great examples of an opinion piece of writing that you can share with your first graders, and they can identify what is it about this piece that makes it an opinion piece? How can we mimic that in our own writing instruction?" So, we're really looking at ensuring that we have anchor texts. Again, we need that abundant literacy to do that. And then, practice number eight, this is word-for-word the same for K-2 and 3-5. Abundant and diverse reading material, including digital texts and opportunities to read in the classroom. So, this is where we're saying, "We are creating print-rich environments across the district." I know when I was first hired, I know Rio is not currently an open building, but when I walked into Rio, I was so excited to see that they had a seating area with books just there. And so, visitors could see that literacy was super important. And that is something that has been carried on when you go to Willow. They have books right on the table as you walk in about what they are studying that month, and it's highlighted by grade levels. So, just providing access. And again, when we see, and we're in an environment that sees, "Oh, look at all these books. Reading must be really important. Why is it that reading is so important?" Or maybe, "This topic about Rosa Parks, this is really important," right? "What do I need to know about that? What do I not know?" We start creating the questions, which then creates that desire to learn, and that's really why it's important to have that knowledge-building curriculum, again, in the second grade. So, and then, the last thing I wanted to highlight with this is that support in those library houses that we are going to be talking about, that's really important, because there is a difference between the type of text that we would present to a second grader versus the type of text we would present to a seventh grader, right? So, when we're looking, again, at the new Willow and looking at house libraries, we're going to be able to really expand, not just expand, but hone in on the reading levels, the content that's appropriate in those grade levels, and the topics and make the connections for their continued learning. So, I just wanted to highlight those. And then, looking at it and really just giving an overview of this holistic approach to literacy access and our district vision. So, again, the district level, it's really important. At the district level, we are responsible for providing resources for both staff and students. And this is not something that we can take lightly. We cannot expect literacy to be important in our buildings if we ourselves at the district level are not ensuring that we have allocated our resources correctly to be able to show that importance, right? And put that in front of our students. And then, in our building level, having those common area libraries and house libraries, this is how we are making sure that we are having adequate access for our students and then those classroom-level libraries. I want to really end by saying that libraries are a super-important part of that comprehensive, coherent literacy plan. And again, I think I could say it again, that we can't just think about a library as a space to hold books, but how are we providing just, "This is our book room for students here," or "Our bookhouse," or "This is our K-2 area that they have more access to text." And the plan being presented tonight to you for classroom libraries, building-level libraries, house libraries, it all fits into this overall plan for literacy. And I mentioned that already, that they're providing access to students within the appropriate developmental and instructional levels. And then, the last thing I want to point out is that having that house library with a certified librarian, that would be one extra support and resource for the teachers to say, "Hey, I have all of these books. I know you're studying about the life cycle of a frog, right? I have all these books that you could bring into your library or your classroom library. You could bring this in when you're writing your informational piece that goes, 'Here's the first step, here's the second step.'" So, you've got the anchor texts available, and you've got a certified librarian that is a resource for those teachers. So, again, I just wanted to really highlight how we are creating the connectedness and that these plans that we're talking about, it's really exciting when you have teams that come together and collaborate and create consensus and say, "This is the best plan that we have for kids to ensure that they have access." So, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Peyton Stalter. He is going to be walking us through the data that we look at for our school index components and the way they are weighted here in the state of Michigan.
Good evening, everyone. I, like Heather, am very passionate about data, so I have the privilege of presenting two slides to you this evening. Both slides come from a presentation from the Michigan Department of Education. In front of you is a school index, which is this composite score that each and every single school across the state of Michigan receives on an annual basis. The department really created this system in order to evaluate their level of support for schools across the state of Michigan. As you look across these components, every one has a little bit of a different weight to it, so a different set of importance based upon MDE's expectations. The nuance between an elementary and a high school is a little different. So, if you see, if a category is not included for a school, such as a graduation rate for an elementary school, those points are distributed across all of those areas. A key point to really pay attention to is my work in collaboration with MDE as the partnership liaison is schools for the most intensive supports are the bottom 5%. Those are identified every three years. And so, we have nine schools that have been identified in the state partnership and five additional support schools. So, I have the privilege of working really closely with them, and we have to really pay attention to student achievement in all of these areas, so that we are growing and improving on a regular basis. And then, after the end of that three-year period, we have our schools graduate out of the partnership process. The area that we're really concentrating on with the data and the library decision is the area indicated in gray, is the school quality, student success. Within this 14% is where the library and media specialists access, as well as the PD or PE and arts access as well. This next slide kind of digs a little bit deeper. So, if you see, all of the categories are on the left-hand side, and the areas that we are concentrating on in our presentation this evening are the areas highlighted in or circled in red. The K-Access to librarians and media specialists, as well as the arts and physical education. The ratios were created and calculated from MDE in the 21-22 school year. That was the year they identified the most recent set of partnership schools. And so, these are calculations across the state of Michigan. If you look at the state access to librarians and media specialists was one librarian or media specialist to every 52,100 students. And access to the arts and PE is one adult to 169.8 students. So, the state of Michigan used this baseline data, because they're continually trying to improve as well. And so, they developed their baseline data to create goals. And so, this next column is their long-term goals from MDE. So, their goal is set for the 2031-32 school year, and these are the proportions or the percentages that they are trying to achieve by that school year. And so, looking at the areas circled in red, the state of Michigan is trying to have districts achieve a ratio of one librarian or media specialist to every 6,125 students and one arts or PE individual to every 124.6 students. This baseline data is really important. As a partnership liaison and our partnership principals, we are really zooming in to make sure that we achieve and can accomplish each and every single point possible in the index so that our schools can graduate. And so, each of these areas are something that we're really hyper-vigilant on and really want to hone in and making sure that we're making database decisions.
Peyton, can you talk a little bit about the long-term goal in 31-32? When are we expected to meet those requirements?
Yeah, thank you for lifting that. So, even though the MDE has the goal for those ratios by the 31-32 school year, we're actually being held accountable to them right now. So, they're encouraging with that expectation for schools to accomplish that by 31-32. So, for example, if we do not hit the 6,125 to 1 ratio for library and media specialists, we only get partial points in that category. So, the longer it takes for our schools to get to those appropriate MDE goals and ratios, the less points we get each year. And so, in order for our schools to demonstrate growth and adequate growth in those areas and achieve the best index scores, we want to accomplish this as soon as possible, so that we're not re-identified in those nine schools or the five additional support schools.
I'm just going to go back a slide. I think this is really important to understand. So, for the school quality and school success, especially for our K-8s, for example, 14% to you may say, "Well, that's kind of a small number," right? But what I do want to point out is, for example, our K-8s do not have a graduation rate, right? Because they don't have students graduating. So, those 10 percentage points are then distributed amongst the other categories. If we do not have a significant population of EL learners at that school, then those 10% are also redistributed into all of the potential categories. So, for some of our schools, that quality and student success indicator is much, much higher than, for example, the pie chart that you're seeing. Dr. Stalter has done an incredible job working with our schools, so they know the exact percentage for their schools of each of these categories, so they know which data that they really need to focus on. And of course, it's not going to be any surprise to you or to our public community that student growth and student proficiency, of course, is going to be the biggest two-pie pieces here, because that is what the purpose of school is, right? Is to make sure that we have students that are reading and writing and being very successful, as Heather said, to make sure that they're super-successful in life. And these are the big pie chart that you're going to see. But I just wanted to make sure that I did point that out, that that is why we are focused on this and really looking at this data, because for our schools, it is very significant. We have had some schools that have not been identified by the partnership by one point or identified by one point. So, when we talk about these, we have to be, as a district, as Peyton said, very hyper-vigilant about each and every single data point. And that's our responsibility at Central Office to make sure that we're making our decisions based on the data. I would like to do a quick comparison here. And again, this is to let you know how we made these decisions, right? So, I want to be really clear that as a school district, we have difficult decisions to make. We have a large school district, over 10,000 students. We have complex programming that we have. We have a unique population of students. So, the decisions that we make are very complex, and so, we have to take in many data points. So, what I'd like to show you on this particular graphic is, on the left, we have our arts and physical education, again, the target that Dr. Stalter pointed out to you, the 124.6 to 1 ratio, which is the goal. We did look at, where are we in the Lansing School District? How far away are we from the MDE's goal? So, on June 7th, we pulled the population, because this was always going to be a decision that we were going to make during the summertime, right? So, we had lots of time to really bring in all of these wonderful stakeholders, our teams, look at the data, take a deep dive, because we knew that these were serious decisions that are going to impact programming, students, and potentially, staff. So, when we look at this, we had approximately 7,158 students in our K-8 population ending last school year. We had 37 individuals employed as arts and physical education teachers, which gave us a ratio of 193.5 to 1. So, what that means is, we're pretty far off from the 124.6 ratio, which means that our Lansing School District schools are missing points in the areas of arts and physical education. We also know that that's a missed opportunity for students as well in the areas of arts and physical education.
I'm sorry, Jess, can you just explain why are these points so critical? I know that a lot of times, people are saying, "But we just want to teach kids, we want to care about kids." What does this matter, actually?
Sure, that's a great question. Of course, that's our main goal, right? But we have to align to what the state of Michigan is saying is a requirement for our schools. It's how we're rated. It's kind of like students with credits or students with grades, right? We have to have a metric of which our schools in the state of Michigan are rated. The MDE has a top 10 plan, right? Priority plan that we've all seen. This is really born out of a lot of that work. But the partnership schools, so what happens is, each school in the state of Michigan is based on these metrics on that pie chart, right? We get those every single school year. They're based on attendance, they're based on the way that our students perform and growth, their student proficiency. An example for student growth that you might not know, for example, is we can only get growth from M-step to M-step. So, we can't show growth from second to third grade, right? Because there is no M-step in second grade. Therefore, those points of that 29 or 34% are then all redistributed amongst proficiency, which is a higher standard, and also into the other ratios. So, what that means is, once a year, they put our schools in a list from top to bottom statewide. And then, what they do is they take the bottom 5% and they identify those schools as partnerships- and they identify those schools as partnership schools, schools that are in the bottom 5%. And then we, as a school district, have to develop plans to make sure that we can make it out of that 5%, right? So we're in with the 95% of schools that are achieving. And that's an ever-moving mark because the higher the state achieves, right? The whole list moves. It's not a set, it's, the point range changes every single year. So we really have to watch. Of course, our eye is always going to be on student growth. Our eye is always going to be on student proficiency. But when there's these other metrics that are involved that we do have control over with, for example, staffing, we need to do our due diligence that we're not being identified because of a lack of staffing, per se, but perhaps because we're not achieving well, right? So it's not just about achievement. It's about all of these other progress notes. I hope I answered that question. Okay. So if we take a look back at the comparison, I'd like to move over now to the librarians. So I'm kind of at the top, top half of the slide here just because I want to go over that, that point first and then talk to you about the decisions that we had to make as a school district. So when we look at the library, library and media specialists, MDE's goal for the 31-32 target, of course, remember, we are being held to that right now. So that is their long-term target. However, if we are not meeting that, we are losing those percentage points. And our schools are farther down in the ranking for school index, which if I was shopping for schools and looking at the school index, these points matter. It's the difference between choosing a school and basing your decisions on that. It's our, it's almost like what we used to call the school's report card, right? Remember those days when we had those? So if we take a look at our media specialists, again, our K8 population on June 7th, the end of the school year, was 7,158 students. We had four certified librarians in K8. So I want to be clear that this metric is only a K8 metric. It is not a high school metric, okay? So you may say, "Well, we had three certified high school librarians. Why does it not say seven?" Because those librarians, actually, that is not a point system that they are using for the high schools. Okay, so I wanted to just make sure that I point that out. So for those four certified librarians, we take that into our 7,158 students. And the ratio that we are at is 1,789.5. We don't have any .5 students, but that's the way the math works, to 1. So when we take a look at this, we can say, "Wow, we've already achieved the MDE's requirements for that, in fact, by quite a lot." People may argue, "Well, but it's librarians. Why wouldn't we have a larger ratio? Why wouldn't it be smaller?" Well, we have to remember, these are requirements that we're being held to for best practices. And then, of course, when we look across the state and the baseline ratio, which means the actual data for the state of Michigan, not a goal, not something that they pulled out of the air, right? This is the actual numbers for the state of Michigan. Across the state of Michigan, we had one certified librarian to 52,100 students. That is not a typo. There's not an extra zero in there, right? So 52,000 students to one librarian. So when we look at that, we look at our data and that's, it's just a point of comparison, right? Now I'd like to look at, how is it that we determined our decisions, right? So my team came before you a couple of weeks ago, shared with you that we wanted to have two certified librarians that would manage the collection and also support our K8 schools. And we were also adding in additional support, such as our instructional assistance, which I will talk a little bit more, more about in just a few minutes. So what, how, you may say, "Well, how did you come up with that decision?" Right? Well, it was not easy, let me tell you. There were many iterations of this plan. As a school district, we talk about plans all the time, things from A to Z, and the last thing you see is the final product, right? So you don't see all of the thought. So we're really opening up and showing you right now exactly the data that we looked at, exactly what we had to take into account and how we arrived at those decisions, okay? So if we take a look at the arts and physical education column again in the bottom, we take a look now at, what does this mean for the 24-25 school year? So approximately on July 30th, of course, we have lots of students that drop an ad during the summertime, so please don't worry, right, with the number discrepancy between the top and bottom. We're still not at August 21st yet. We have 7,088 students in the K8. So we were wondering to ourselves, "Well, how many teachers would it take to get us to that MDE goal?" Right? Because we know right now, we are not meeting that. We're at 193.5 to 1. If we had took our current staff, rolled them over, we would be at, with the new numbers, 191.6 to 1. Okay, still not meeting the metric. All right, let's take a look, if we had 45 staff members, where would we be then? We would be at 157.5 to 1, right? So we still need to get our kids more access to art, music, and PE. We know how important all of these things are, art, music, PE, library. You're, we're not comparing which is more important. We're not saying which ones are better for students or not. They're all important. It's creating a well-rounded education for our students. If we look at hiring 50 of our art, music, and PE teachers, we are still at 141.8 to 1, still not making the metric, right? And if, as the board knows, each of these certified staff members are approximately $117,000. So this adds up very quickly when we talk about staff. And then we roll into staffing shortage, right, nationwide. So then we say, "All right, well, let's try, what would get us to that again, that magic mark of 124.6? It would take 57 art, music, and PE teachers to get us to that range." So right now, if we just rolled over our staff, we would be 20 staff members short, right? So these are all of the conversations that me, my team, the team that you saw, I brought a couple of different people because the office that we have spreads from our principals who help us make these decisions through their eddestat meetings and looking at their data and what's important and how things are interacting, to our directors of instruction. They're not all here tonight. And really making sure that we're making the best possible decision. They're not easy. These were not overnight decisions. These were long-term decisions with lots of conversation, right? As a deputy superintendent, I would love to rule with my heart. I wish that that was the way that we could rule the world, right? Unfortunately, we have budgets. Unfortunately, we need to be looking at data. We are being measured every day as a school district, right? By the smiling faces of our graduates, to the data that we're being held to, even in our newspapers, correct? So this is, these are the things that are weighing on, weighing on us as educators. If we then take a look at our school librarians, because this is a piece of the puzzle, because what you have to remember, and I don't know that everyone knows this in the public, when we talk about a certified librarian, these are certified teachers. These are teachers that can be in the classroom. These are teachers that are highly qualified to teach kindergarten through eighth grade. Some have specialties in reading intervention. Some have specialties in art and other things. So these are not just individuals that are certified librarians, and that's what they can do. They have a wide breadth of talents, which also means that we have to look at them in the overall picture of our wonderful resources here in the Lansing School District, okay? So when we take a look at our current population for, again, the fall, we have 7,088 students. If I had one librarian, certified librarian, that would put us at a ratio of 7,088 to 1. Now, while we're out, well, outperforming the rest of the state with their 52,100, we are, we are still not meeting the MDE's requirements. So let's take a look, if we had two librarians, what would certified librarians, what would that bring us to? Well, there we have 3,544 to 1. We are meeting the metric for the state. And actually, we're beating it by quite a lot because the metric is 6,000 here, we're at about 3,500. And then again, you can see at three librarians, the ratio that it puts us at, and then a four librarian, librarians. Currently, for the next school year, because you might be wondering this, well, how many music, art, and PE teachers do we have right now? Currently, we have 44. So if we take a look, it's close to 45. That'd put us at about the 157.5 range. Of course, what we mean is it brings us closer, right, than our 193. We're super happy about that. However, our schools, when we are ranked this fall in the school index score, we will not be meeting that metric. We will be getting partial credit. It is not an all-or-nothing system, so I want to be clear about that. But we will not be meeting that benchmark. We will, however, be meeting the benchmark for librarians, which is wonderful. Three of our certified librarians are in that 44 art, music, and PE. So I know that I put a letter out to the community at the, at the end of last week, kind of talking a little bit about the decisions that we had to make. I did meet with our certified librarians in May. I wanted them to be aware that we were going to be constructing a plan. As you may know, our librarians last year were in a school for one semester and then moved to another school second semester. And what that meant was, in many of our libraries, several of which are sitting at this table with our principals, those libraries laid empty for an entire semester. That's just not acceptable, right? We can't have libraries closed because we have, we don't have the, the programming to be able to do that, which is why we are talking about our instructional assistance and really revamping the entire way that we look at libraries, including with our literacy plan. So again, the things that I have to worry about as a deputy superintendent are these. I have wonderful human resources. I know we love libraries. We love librarians. I'm sure we all even have fond memories of checking out books and being excited to pull things off shelves and being guided by our certified librarians. No one is here to tell you that these are not wonderfully important people. What we are here, though, is we do have to make difficult decisions. Our board has had to make, over the years, many difficult decisions. They're not easy. We have to weigh all of the, the things that are before us. One of the things that I have as a deputy superintendent is I know we have 24 classroom openings right now in the Lansing School District. I have librarians that are certified to be in the classrooms. I have librarians that are certified to be in art and music and PE. So I have to weigh, and it's not an easy task, which of those is most important? How do you say that, right? It's like picking between your two children. We can't have favorites. My daughter asks me every time, "We already know who your favorite is." I don't even have an idea of what she means, but they all think they have an idea between my two, who's my favorite, right? It's each of, it's the other, it's the other of them. So I want to make sure that we're clear that this is difficult. But when I look at having a third grade opening or when I look at having an art opening, knowing that that will move us closer to the MDE metric, that was really what prompted us to make the decision about librarians that was presented to you a couple of weeks ago with reducing the number to two, okay? One of the other things that we certainly cannot ignore is models from across the state.
Sorry, can I just interrupt?
Of course.
No, no, I, I don't want to stop the, the progress. This is awesome. I want to just highlight and bring up what Jessica said, that we do have 24 vacancies in classrooms. I do want to also say that that is one-third of where we were last year. We had about 75 to 100 vacancies at this time last year. So I want to give a lot of credit for getting us to only that 24-25 piece because I know that would be a shocking data point for everybody to hear. But I do want to also understand and be very clear that any vacancy is a bad vacancy. And so what Jessica is saying is certainly as the deputy superintendent, it's her responsibility to try to fix that. And so that's what it is. But once you said the number, I wanted to just put it in context. That's actually much, much better than it has been in a long time.
And that does include things like electives. It is not necessarily all third grade classrooms, right? So we just need to be clear that that's all of our classroom vacancies. One of the questions that our team was wondering about, though, is when we looked at the number and then we looked at the metric from the state, we always have to ask, "Well, what are other school districts doing?" Right? How is this impacting other communities? Because these are not metrics that we're just held by. These are metrics that the entire state of Michigan is held by. So in looking at my school data and also working with a representative from SEPI, which is the, the area that takes care of all of our pupil accounting for the state, we wanted to look at the statewide comparison and models. It's a little cut off there, but that's what that word is. So when we take a look on the left, we have our local libraries as rated by, as reported by the state of Michigan, right, to my school data. These are self-reporting things that each district has to submit. And then these are, anyone in the public, you can go on my school data and you can look at any school across the state of Michigan and look up these metrics. So when we take a look on the left-hand side, we are looking at our neighboring communities, Dansville, East Lansing, Haslett, Williamson, Stockbridge. The only school district that is even close to the Lansing School District is Mason with three certified librarians. We have many communities around us that have zero librarians, which then started to make sense to me around that 51,200 number, right? Because Waverly has a large community. That's a large number for ratio that's going to focus on that. Williamson, Weberville, Leslie, et cetera. Then we took a look at, well, that's great, but you know Lansing, we're kind of the big dog in the area, right? We're the biggest in our, in our, our pools. So we wanted to look at some common-sized districts, some common demographic districts. And so therefore, you can see the chart on the left. So that's why we're including things like Flint, Saginaw, Grand Rapids. As you can see across those, again, the only school district that is even close to the Lansing School District is Kalamazoo with three certified librarians. Without going through every single district in the, in the state, which I did attempt to do, which is a huge task and it was on the weekend, it was not on district time, I am fairly certain, like 99.9%, that Lansing has the most certified librarians in the state of Michigan at this time. So this, again, compounded the heaviness of this decision for us, right? So when we take a look, this is where we created this plan. This is where all of this came from. Now, this is a long presentation, but imagine the decision-making that was happening in hours of conversation and pouring over data and finding resources and calling school districts. One of the things I do want to say is, in conversations with the Michigan Libraries Association, they even said to us in conversation, "We're actually surprised that you don't employ library clerks." What we at the Lansing School District would call instructional assistants, right? "We're surprised that you don't have more parent volunteers in your library because usually that's why school districts are calling us." If they don't have a certified librarian, they want to make sure that their students are still receiving quality access to texts, and that's how they've solved those problems. So when we created our plan, these are all things that we had to look at. So again, last school year, just as a recap, we had seven certified librarians district-wide, three, one at each high school, and then four certified librarians serving our K8 students district-wide. So we're talking just solely about certified librarians here. The initial plan, which was presented to the board and shared by my wonderful colleagues a couple of weeks ago, was, again, no change to the high schools, three certified librarians. We were, we were proposing two certified librarians to oversee the K8 libraries and also, and serve those K8 students during that time, also meaning that we would then be able to have library for first and second semester. We needed, we knew we had to revamp that plan. That was no one's fault. It's, during the summertime, we try to come up with the best iterations that we can. Sometimes they're great and sometimes they're not. And so we have to reevaluate those each year. That also means that I had two certified librarians who are classroom teachers, who are certified teachers, that can then service in these other areas of need, right? Still while me, meeting the requirements, still while getting our students access to those print-rich environments. We then know that we needed, again, this is back to why I started with our literacy plan, we knew that we needed supports in our elementary classrooms. What that meant was, we put forward that we would like to have 34 instructional assistants, primarily servicing our kindergarten because we know that's our earliest grade in school, huge transition, right, for learners. And it's very foundational to their success moving forward. And then also having another instructional assistant, so two per building for our K8s, that would also assist with our third-grade students because we also know that that is a huge lynchpin to our reading progress and the reading acquisition for our students. Those instructional assistants would also help assist in the libraries. They are not taking the place of school librarians. And by that, I mean they are not giving lessons. We heard from our principals, we heard from our parents. They wanted more access to libraries. We heard that. We heard that last spring. That was not new to us. So these instructional assistants are hired for eight hours. They can then make sure that the libraries are open during lunchtime. It's a critical time for students. Not everybody wants to go outside. Not everybody wants to be in a, in an activity that has lots of noise and lots of kids. Kids love to read. We have lots of them. I've watched even sitting at board meetings that they come and tag along with their parents and they bring their books with them, right? So we needed a space that instructional assistants could make sure were open. We also heard loud and clear that before and after school is another time where we would like to have libraries open. So those positions will be flexed, so we will have one before school So those positions will be flexed, so we will have one before school and one stay after school for a period of time. So again, the libraries are open. So that is the initial plan that we proposed to you. Since then, we've heard a lot of advocacy amongst, at our board meetings and in community letters and from feedback to even our school principals and to myself, that there was a cry for more certified librarians. So we are coming to the board this evening, hearing that, but also knowing that this is coming really at a cost, right? So we have to really weigh what it is that we're, what, what were the decisions that we're making here. So what that will mean is the proposal that we're bringing is three certified librarians, again, that has not changed, one at each high school, and then four certified librarians to oversee our kindergarten through eighth grade schools. So reinstating the four librarians that we had last year. We are really lucky to be able to offer still 20 instructional assistants that will still support library instruction, literacy instruction and library usage. Again, during, that'll mean one person trained at each of our schools, two at some of our larger schools like Gardner, Dwight Rich and Patengill, that can then make sure that the libraries are open during lunchtime. If a teacher has a special project, it's not a day the librarian's there, that they will be trained. And we are really lucky because the American Libraries Association has offered to offer us PD for those individuals, and we will definitely be taking them up on that. I've been in communication with the, with the representative at that, that particular organization. That does not mean, and I want to be really clear, that we're not going to have 34 instructional assistants. We still will have 34 instructional assistants, but they will not be in complete support of the library, because we will now have four certified librarians, right? So they can really focus 100%, the other 14, on kindergarten and third grade literacy and math. So I just wanted to share with you kind of our decision-making. It again, was a difficult topic to bring up and talk about, because we all care very deeply, but when we're looking at the overall programming for our students, we have to make the best decisions within the budget and within the resources that we have. And now onto some more exciting topics, right? Something that I know that the community has voted, we have our wonderful bond to build these wonderfully beautiful schools and amazing opportunities for our students. And so I'm going to turn it over to the principals of these three schools to really talk about the library spaces and also the process of developing the designs for these buildings. So I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Nicole Beard.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about this exciting venture for our students. So we are going to have a campus model, and we're very excited about that. And it's important to just remind everyone that this was not a decision made in isolation. It was inclusion of the Willow community. And it's super important because it, we heard their desire to have the children separated. So from the largest, from, from the older students, excuse me, giving us innovative outdoor spaces and just allows the kids to get out and to be out more and promoting health. So that was something that was very important to the community and our families and our staff, so we wanted to definitely honor that. But when you look at our campus model, wanted to make sure that kids had access to books. We've seen the different buildings, just allow them to have less frequent access. So books in, rather than just having one library, we felt the need to spread that out so kids would have more access. So they would have them in their classrooms, and this, again, this is something that the families and the students expressed a need for, having their own space and just access to their classroom books, for the grants. We thank you for stepping up for us and allowing our kids to get access to new books that are, that are engaging to them and just at their fingertips. And we want it to be in a warm and comfortable atmosphere. So 10 library spaces, two are going to be housed, house libraries. They're 775 square feet. Currently, our library is 1,010 square feet. So if you look at the pink spaces, this denotes where we'd have the larger house libraries and then the classroom libraries and spaces. I do also want to go back and just say that we did communicate and give people opportunities to share their thoughts about this plan. Lots of opportunities. Didn't get as much feedback at that time as we would have liked, but nevertheless, lots of opportunities for people, because we know people are busy. We want to make sure that they have an opportunity to give their voice. So we had an opportunity to do a recording that was on Facebook for them to, to learn about that. School events, I use any opportunity that I can. If they're here for the spring musical, hey, just wanted to let you know, just wanted to remind you, we're here at Riddle for two more years. And just, you know, building that excitement, because we have families that joined us later in the year, and they may not know. And, and we still get those phone calls. So always being ready, and my, and our team knows when families inquire, just share. Parent inquiry, you know, sometimes during arrival or dismissal, a parent will come up and they'll ask questions. So just always being ready to share what we, where we will be in, in two years. And very excited about us now being a pre-K8 building, so that we can really foster that hard work that we do with our K4 and keep some of our families, and they leave us, we're like, ugh, you know, they're gone, they're going to fifth grade. So two years, you know, we can retain these wonderful families and people want their kids in one school. So we really wanted to honor that. So I just really wanted to just say that Heather says so much, so much, great things, but I just wanted to cheat a little bit and just reiterate when she was talking about the essential practices and literacy instruction, that plan allows us to give children access to reading materials that's diverse, which includes digital texts, and reading opportunities in the classroom. We want to foster that love for literacy. We want children to learn how to find books that are like Goldilocks and the Three Bears, too hard, too easy, just right. We want them to have access to all those books and just finding little nooks and just read and enjoy. So I'm excited. I feel that we did listen to the voice of our Willow family, and we really look forward to seeing the building rise. I drive by it all the time, I'm like, huh, still dirt, you know, but I know, we got to get Mount Hope done first, but, so I'll be patient. So thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over now to senior director, Kim Johnson-Rey.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, sitting in for Nicole. And I wanted to share that planning, the planning meetings for the new Mount Hope was attended by parents, students, faculty and staff, and everyone was eager to share their thoughts, their ideas, their vision for the school, which created a collaborative and inclusive planning process. So that was really important, the planning process, so that all the stakeholders had an opportunity to share their ideas. As you're looking at the plan, it is one single building, it's one large building. And if you look at the pink outlined or the pink shaded area, that will be their library media center. So this library media center will be one of their key features for the new Mount Hope. It's going to be a resource hub, and it's going to provide all the students with access to a wealth of educational materials, fostering love and learning and supporting academic success. So that's their goal. That's their whole goal. It's like, we want to make sure that our students have everything possible to make sure that they're ready for their, for life, right? Because as lifelong learners, school is going to be, and learning is the important thing. The school community is thrilled about the construction of the new building. There's a palpable sense of excitement and anticipation as they look forward to moving to their new school space next year. The new Mount Hope will be a fantastic environment for students to thrive and grow. They want to continue the community that they've created in this one school. As you know, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade students will be housed there, and so they wanted to make sure that that one building helped to, helped to continue their climate, their climate and culture that they're creating. So just wanted to kind of share what Nicole had shared with me, with you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I'm going to now turn it over to principal Dan Gao at Luton.
Thanks, everybody, for inviting me here to talk about how exciting it is to have a new school. We've had five meetings total about this new school to gather data. Unlike them, I mean, we're just at the ground floor of it, right? We're, we're still living the, the ground floor. We just had one last week. It was well-attended. We had 21 total parents between a hybrid model. We had some in-person, some were online. And I've tried my best to cultivate this in a way that as many people as possible feel comfortable with taking part in the conversations of it. It's pretty hard to do in a school, no air conditioning, but they kind of adjust, you know? This last one, the school district facilitated it. Parents brainstormed their top priorities for the new building. Those priorities are listed up there on the, on the PowerPoint, but I just want to kind of like, go through a couple of things before getting into those priorities. One, both parents and staff really indicated that they wanted a school where there was a clear separation between the upper grades and the lower grades. That was a, a clear priority between everybody that was taking part in the conversation. And they also really leaned towards, especially the, the community leaned towards the idea of a single building. Not, not any kind of like campus style where there are wings. They truly want the traditional model of a school. So then Christina Tokar, who led the meeting, and her, her team, as well as a couple of other people that are up here with me, they asked the crowd, like, what are your priorities for the school if we have it this way or that way? Separating it into two clear spaces, inside the school, outside the school. Among the five priorities for the internal space for our school, they really identified a singular library, room for art, like one designated room for art instruction, middle school lockers, sustainable building materials that kind of project that 21st century idea of sustainability. And then finally, a dedicated science space, and this includes labs, STEM, that, that kind of like idea where science is able to explored in a singular coherent space outside of the classroom. Externally, which was always a good conversation, they really wanted a multi-use field for sports. I really shot for the moon and asked for a specific baseball field, but I think it's a multi-use is the one that they kind of identified. Playground by grade levels, and you see that separation taking place again, right? It was a really clear message, both from staff and community, that separation. A zip line, a natural play space and accessible playground equipment that encourages all people to take part in it, this kind of physical activity regardless of your background. The parent feedback about this meeting, that the most recent one was really positive, Christina gathered some of it, as well as this team, and like, I think people are really excited about it. And the next step, obviously, are that these recommendations go to the architects. And while we originally kind of worked from the Willow model, we really restructured it to fit this idea of a traditional singular building that includes a singular library and hearing the community and what, what the community truly had to share. Which is a really good segue into just my point B. Couple times this summer, people reached out to me about this narrative that somehow my library was packed up. I've been in my building all summer. Not a single book has been packed up in any sort of way whatsoever for my library. Nobody has touched it. The only thing that has changed relatively is I moved the printer from our staff lounge into the library. That's the only thing. It is very, very much so, my vision, that literacy and the library go hand-in-hand, not just as thought partners, but also instructional partners on a daily basis. I've been in my school for a year. Much like they said, for a whole semester last year, it was cordoned away. The only thing that took place in that library was speech instruction, and it was in a corner of it. I tried to encourage more open instruction for it. I truly did. There was a fear of a kind of unmonitored activity. Then, when I took over in February, I, I kind of took that narrative, because we had a librarian in our building at that time, and I pushed it. More books, more books. And along with that, just to, just to contrast that narrative that my books are going anywhere, we spent $25,000 expanding that library to include a lot more Spanish books. As an immersion school, that was vital for us. And when I looked at the library and I saw only roughly a 15% contrast between Spanish-only books and English books, I didn't think that cut it. So increasing the library and increasing the selection of books was a big part for me this spring. So I was really surprised. But with this and that library transferring us to this new building, you know, we're only going to expand it further, it, more options and a better outlook on literacy that comes with it, I'm really excited and I know the community is too for this. So thank you for your time, and I'm, I'm really glad you guys invited me here to talk about this.
We really appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Do we mind if, do you mind if we take some questions from the board? Okay, great. I'm, I'm going to just start out by saying I really appreciate Ms. Kiara. You're, you're setting that ground up for us, for giving us information on our literacy instruction model and plan, and then weaving that together with why libraries and librarians are important. I know that there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of concern about, there are communities where schools and communities are actively disinvesting in libraries and literacy. And so when we hear that there could be a potential reduction of librarians, it feels like it's going down that course and it can be very disconcerting. So I really appreciate that, this presentation. And I just want to remind folks and my colleagues, and this is even reminded for ourselves, ourselves as a board, our board doesn't hire building staff. And it's our, or building-level staff, it's our responsibility to set the policy that guides how things are done in this district and how we can support the mission and vision through our policy. So this isn't something that would typically come to the board for a vote or any sort of decision. It's not in our decision-making model. What our decision-making model would include, looking at how do we make sure we're aligned with MDE and other law requirements. However, what we can do is make statements or attestations and hold the superintendent accountable to our expectations. And so that's why what we have on the agenda for us to consider later is a resolution to help articulate what our expectations are around libraries, librarians and literacy. All of that is a preamble to a couple of questions that I have. So the first question is, I have three, I only have three, well, one, one more comment. I cannot believe that there are 52,000 to one student statewide, which helps me understand why the MDE ratio is only one to 6,000, because they're thinking that's a major improvement. So just because that's considered a major improvement by their metrics, we still get credit as long as we are exceeding that metric. Is that correct? Okay. And the issue that we have is that we are not meeting the metric for AMPV, art, music and PE. Perfect. Now, there were two things on the slide I wasn't sure about. There was house library. Can we talk to us a little bit about making that connection for learning? And then there was the library community committee? Could we, could you share a little bit about that with us?
Yes, so I'll just go back here for a minute. So if we take a look at the new Willow plan, as Dr. Beard talked about, we have kindergarten, actually pre-K through two spaces. So those spaces on this particular map have the pink circles. Those are where our architects and our families really felt that they needed to have books really right there for students, right? For kindergartners, for first graders, for preschoolers, right there in the space. So those are the classroom libraries. I do want to be clear, though, that those classroom libraries are not based solely on the grant that Ms. Kiara talked about, those 400 books. These are actually the books that would be curated and are curated by the Lansing School District, right? These are part of our library collection. And so when we talked about having initially our two certified librarians, now four certified librarians, they would be integral in making sure that these are the curated collections that any kindergarten through second grader or pre-K in this case, which is really exciting, has really right at their fingertips, right? As you know, with the campus model, they are not in the main building. And so if we had the singular library, and I know that was a concern of the families, is if we have all of the books or the library in one particular building, my child doesn't have the proximity to those books. So the research and the, the theory behind this is that we would have the classroom libraries curated for each one. It still means that the librarians would visit those classrooms. It still means that they would have lessons, right? So that's the classroom libraries. You've distinguished the house libraries. So those are those pink spaces that you see on the left-hand side. Those house libraries are in our third through fifth grade pod. So those are 775 square feet libraries, right? So this is libraries, again, from our curated collection that will be visited by our, our certified librarians, that children will have then close proximity to in their house library. Currently, as Nicole shared, their Willow library is 1,010 square feet. We will now have two libraries of 775 square feet, so over 1,400 square feet in space, or 1,550, I think, if I did the math correctly. So the house libraries, again, are just, are leveled, will be leveled for those grade levels. I know we have heard some concern from some parents, especially when we showed at the Willow model, like, how does that work? Right? Like, what if we have a child that's well over the reading level or under the reading level and they're in a third through fifth grade area? Well, that's why we have diagnostic tests like NWA, right? Like I said, we have certified librarians, those are certified teachers. They're looking at that assessment data and making sure those collections would be appropriate for the students in that area. And so when we talk about a house library, you may also have heard it as a pod library. That just means a library that is specific to those grade levels in the campus model. that just means a library that is specific to those grade levels in the campus model.
And then the community, library community committee.
I'm really glad that you brought that up. So at the board meetings in the past, and through phone calls and letters that I've received, it is clear that our community really cares about libraries, which is super exciting to hear. That's a venue that we haven't heard a lot from our community on, and because of this, I wanted to start a library committee. We want to get this right. So what that means is, I will be meeting with our community once a month, be kind of an open forum. I'm sure Superintendent Shuldiner will be putting it in his letter, once we have our Google Sheet and sign up, and how that will work, starting in September. But it's really a format to give feedback on how our current libraries are doing. How is the, how is it happening with our instructional assistants? Is there enough access? Do you have enough time? What are you feeling about the lessons that your child, your children are receiving? How is the community want to become a part of this? Are there different resources that we could use? And so this is our way to really instill a committee. If we have people that want to share about libraries, then we want to learn from them. And so it's really an open space for me to be able to sit with others on my team, and meet with members of our community, parents, children, that want to come and share experiences in libraries, so that we can make it the best possible for our students. So that's kind of a new thing for us.
Thank you. Questions from colleagues? Mr. Nowacki?
Yes, I just want to expand on that community piece. You mentioned in talking with one of the library associations, they were surprised we didn't have volunteers checking out books, and I wonder if that's something we're looking at as another way to increase that access. I know my son didn't have access because of that semester thing, and actually, both semesters were very limited. So could you maybe expand on if that's something we conclude in the plan?
Yes, absolutely. Parent volunteers are always something that we welcome in the Lansing School District, not just in our libraries, but just in general. We do have parents that will come in and read books with children, help them with math facts, even do things like run copies for teachers, right? So a varying, if you want to be involved, we will find a way for you to be involved. We did, for example, I did put a letter out with Principal Gowell to the Luton community regarding the different options for the libraries, and one of the things we said is, please, if you want to be a parent volunteer, contact your principal. So I think for any of those of you that are out there listening, or if you have friends or family that are parents in the district, or want a way to get involved, we would love it if you would be involved with our libraries. Thank you for expounding on that.
Thank you, Ms. Moore?
Yes, I love libraries. Could you please share a little bit about Mahhope's Media Center? I was wondering what that would look like.
I'm actually going to turn this over to Christina Tokar, because I know that she has been a part of those conversations even more deeply, and without Nicole Holliday here, she might be one of our best resources.
Sure, thank you. Had a feeling that question might be coming. So even if you tour several of our buildings now, several of our libraries are called media centers, like that's what they're called on the outside. So I don't want anybody to think that by it being called a media center on here, that it's something other than a library. So what we're looking at is creating kind of that 21st century learning model that we kind of talked about a couple of weeks ago with the board, so having those different learning spaces within the library. So yes, having books, maybe on traditional shelving, having books on mobile shelving that can also be used for seated spaces, having some more of those collaborative learning environments, and different things that can happen within the library. So having media in there, having research tools for students, some of those other things that Ms. Kiara talked about. You know, libraries aren't just books anymore, they're safe spaces for students, they're collaborative spaces for students, media centers, having access to text in multiple different ways. So we're designing that now with all of that in mind.
Thank you for sharing that, because when I thought, when it's noted, media center, I thought about a 3D printer. I've been working in a library for 26 years, so I thought about our technology space.
Yeah.
So let's chit chat if you want to.
Okay, we can do that, yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Good evening. I actually, I'm glad we're having this discussion, but I want to go back a little bit to the literacy part of the presentation, because for me, it spans a lot to get to the library concept, but I have some questions and concerns, so maybe you can give me clarification on those. I know you talked about PD and teaching our teachers, but is their learning curve going to be different for tenured teachers versus new teachers? And to keep it going and keeping the children learning on the different spaces, as well as keeping the educators excited about this component? That's one of my first questions, so I'll go one by one.
So really, we've been very blessed with the, I would say, the willingness of all of our teachers. We in Lansing, well, the state of Michigan gave every teacher an opportunity to be trained in letters, so Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And that is one of the research-based, how children learn to read, science of reading. In Lansing, I'm super proud to be a part of a district where I would say about 50% of our teachers are participating in that training, and that's a commitment, because that is, it's a college-level course that expands over three years of learning. In my previous district, I had one teacher participate in that, and in Lansing, we have about 50% of our teachers that are participating, and they come together and share their learning. So during our steering committee meetings, I didn't really have to do much convincing about, hey, we should really look into this. They were coming to me, saying, what else can we do to bring this to our colleagues? And it's not all new learning, but it's really about getting that systematic approach. So what I noticed, what we took away from it, was they wanted time to collaborate together on how can we ensure the systematic guaranteed and viable curriculum? How can we ensure that in kindergarten, these are the things that we are teaching, and we're agreeing upon that these are the non-negotiables that we want our students to learn? And that this is what's happening in second grade, right? So that we have that systematic approach across the district for that coherent instruction. I don't know if I'm really answering your question very well, because they were eager to do this learning together, and share with their colleagues, and do the train-the-trainer model. So everything has really kind of organically come together with that. I don't know, Nicole, if you could speak about that in your building, you have, I think every one of your teachers are participating in letters training at Willow, so.
Sure. Yes, almost all of the teachers, I'm encouraging some of our newer teachers to do letters as well. I will be taking letters for administrators in October as well, so the building can be up to speed on this important initiative. And I just, I support it, give teachers space to do what they need to do. We have our literacy coaches that come and support as well. So the message is, whether this is your first year, or your 25th year, everyone has space to grow and learn, and letters is one of the things that, the tools that we're really promoting to help push that.
Okay, so to build on to that, so you said about 50% of the teachers in the district, but if literacy is one thing that we should, why is it not incorporated into their yearly performance, as well as staff's yearly performance? Because that is something that we are really looking at moving the right way.
So that's a really great question, and that's one of the things that, as a district, we've continued to identify ways that we can incorporate this into job-embedded coaching, right? So that it's not going outside of their time, it's not, I can't require them to do it. So every one of our DPPPD days have time dedicated to the coaching and learning on the new curriculum. We also intentionally built in job-embedded coaching for the first two years of implementing the new curriculum, so all of our teachers have days where the coaches are coming and working with those teachers, and the teachers are the ones that are going to create the questions. Okay, we've done this, what can you help us with this? Looking in their PLC times, their grade level planning times, to support them in, what else do you need to know to be successful, right? I can't tell you, I know you're going to need to know this about the program, I could probably figure that out, but as a learner, when I'm going through the program, I'm going to automatically have questions that I'm going to write down and want to get information on, or better practice. So we're providing those opportunities for that, and scheduling that. We're intentionally using the time that we have for professional learning on the things that we are highlighting. And again, using our instructional coaches to support that as well, so that it's not a, maybe this teacher's got it, this teacher doesn't. All of our instructional coaches are part of that letters training, and have taken letters training, so they can go in and support that with our teachers.
Okay, you talked about that, so on to my next question, building on to that. You talked about the teachers having it, but what have you done to implement the parent and the student, so the parent can help that child at home? Because that is where that connection needs to be, and I didn't hear any part of that, because again, we have this process in place. You said apples to oranges, I look at apples and oranges, we all learn differently, but we're, how is that being implemented?
Again, really good questions, and I'm glad, like, I'm sitting here going, oh, I should have told him about this, I should have told him that Luton was included in this plan too, and they have a whole new literacy program, like, all the things. But we do have district communication that has been drafted, and going out about the new literacy program, what it means, all the science of reading pieces with it, and the knowledge building. I think Christina's team has been working on the media piece. We did write all of that communication. And then when we did the pilot, one of the things that we learned in doing the pilot was, we had teachers give us feedback, we had instructional assistants, we had building level leaders, we had students give us feedback, and we didn't have an open house for parents. And so as we were going through that, that was one of the things we missed. When we were doing a new pilot for math, that was one of the first things we included in it. So we're learning as we're going in some of those things, but with the parents, now our role is, make sure we're communicating what it is we've adopted, why we've adopted it, and then how this is going to help impact our students and the community. So I appreciate you bringing that up, but that is, that is in the works.
I'm going to have a Caitlin Kavanaugh moment here. You talked about MED statistics data, what about our individual school, district-level data for the, how MDC rates, how we get the point, how does that, you gave us a state overall pie chart? How does our district individually, what are our statistics compared to that? Not being included, but school by school, level by, how do we rate in that?
So it's a range, right? So each of our schools has an individual score. So I believe, I don't know, it was about a year ago, I came to all of you and really gave a presentation on our partnership schools. So those nine schools, along with the five in additional supports, I can get you the list of those. And for all of you that are watching from home, you can go on my school data, and you can see anyone's school index score statewide, which I think would be really interesting for all of you, but I would be happy to give you the score, the school scores, one by one. But they do vary, depending on the different, the different aspects of each school.
And one thing if I can add, I mean, to be overtly, you know, blunt, and you know, I think for those of you who know me, we've always been very, very steadfast about this, they're very low. And the reason why Jessica and her team was having this conversation about librarians and art and PE, is because the school index scores for our schools are incredibly low. They're so low that we have nine schools in partnership. If you're in partnership, it means you're in the bottom 5% of the entire state. And so it behooves us, me as superintendent, your employee, who is held responsible to making these schools better on the school index score, because if you're not, you can get shut down, you can get taken over, that's the whole point, is that we have to be really thoughtful about how the school index score is created, hence why we're having this whole conversation in the first place. Because Jessica, who I guess works for me, although really, she works for all of you, is tasked with the idea of, how are we going to get these schools to get better? And it's not just about the kids' learning, which of course is the paramount and most important thing, but we're held to a certain standard. And so the reason why her and her team even had these conversations with folks, is because they're looking so critically at our school index scores, which are in fact low. Which we've shared with the community, because we were the first ones to kind of admit, when we got the list, what was going on. And so, you know, it is a range, we don't, not all of our schools are on the partnership list, but a lot of them are, but I will say that a lot of them are on that list, one point, two point, they made it, they didn't make it. Those points are what Jessica was looking at when it comes to the score for PE, or the score for libraries. Because again, and not to kind of beat a dead horse here, for the pre-K3 buildings that we have, the graduation numbers don't really exist, and the progress numbers don't really exist, because they don't have M-Step in second grade. So they only really have those third grade numbers. So it's really hard to move the needle on pre-K3 buildings unless they really look deeply at the art, music, PE, library numbers. But, you know, they're not very high, we're happy to give everybody them, they're certainly public, but that's why we have Dr. Stalter in the position he's in, because he's got to help support those partnership schools, which there are nine of. And then there's, I think, you said five that get support, which we can go into more detail about, but basically just know that nine of our schools are in this partnership. The good news, we seem to be moving pretty quickly out of it, which is awesome, but that's exactly why we're kind of doing this.
And my final question, special population, how are we going to, I know we have to have a, but there's that population that may need that extra, how is that aligned in the curriculum that you all have chosen?
Yeah, so one of the important things that we think about when we talk about Tier One, is the instruction is all connected, right? We have a multi-tiered system of support. And so Tier One instruction is the instruction that all students get. Tier Two instruction is the instruction that students that are having difficulty grasping the concepts, or making progress in the concepts, and then Tier Three. So we've done a special ed collaboration, special pops collaboration, where we've been working on, what are the supports that we're going to provide? What additional resources do we provide for that Tier Two instruction? And again, I'm really excited to, we started with Tier One, and this year, we have identified Tier Two. So we know what systematic approach for Tier Two instruction we're using, and then we're making those connections, again, with our EL learners, our special education students, everybody. But we really need to start with the foundation that all students are general education students first, that have diverse needs, and then how do we meet those needs with additional resources? So all of that was part of the plan. Thank you for asking those questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, are you all set? Your questions? Thank you. Dr. Kavanaugh?
Hi, thank you so much for this presentation. There was a lot of information, and I am one of those people who likes like a take-home message. So I would like to summarize my understanding of this presentation, and then ask if I'm summarizing it accurately, just to make sure I'm on board. So I know this presentation was called Libraries, but we actually talked about three topics. Topic number one was literacy. I really appreciate my colleague, Ms. Williams, who gave us a great kind of deep dive into literacy, and I appreciate your work. So topic number one was literacy. The take-home message is, we have a plan in place for literacy that is aligned with our mission statement, is aligned with the state's requirements. The second topic that we talked about was librarians. And to me, the take-home message is, if you could go back two slides earlier from this one? So to me, the take-home message here is, basically, ignore the thing in orange, we're not doing it anymore. Last year, we did the thing in blue, now we're doing the thing in green. The only difference between blue and green is that there are more instructional assistants to keep the libraries open more, and that now we are opening these decisions and these discussions up to a community committee. Is that an accurate summary?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last topic that we talked about was physical library spaces. And my understanding of the take-home message there is that all of the schools in our district have libraries, including a house library. Now, some people might quibble about Willow, but if you could go back, that's the one slide after this. So the way I think about this is, we have a number of schools right now in our district that are K3 or K4, and some that are, you know, 47, 48, but we're moving more toward this K through 8 model. And so in Willow, we're essentially seeing, it's like if two schools were just sharing one campus for the ease of parents in the community. And so although I'm seeing two chunks of pink here, it's really that there are two house libraries, correct? Okay. So my take-home message for physical library spaces would be that every school has a house library. So for literacy, librarians and libraries, am I understanding correctly the take-home message? Thank you.
Now, if you could just write that down for me, that'd be great. Mr. Lopez?
Madam President, thank you for the summary. Couple of questions and observations or comments. So the reading materials, you're talking about having those materials that excite children, right? And so we have a DEI committee. And, um, so we have a D E I committee and a multicultural education committee that's putting together a plan to have multicultural education in all classrooms, right? So the books that you're, um, bringing to the libraries, were they done in conjunction with these committees?
Actually, the head of all of our libraries is the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and that was very intentional, right? So all of the books that go through those collections make sure that they are multicultural, they're diverse, they meet the needs of cultural responsiveness. And even the pilots that we are doing in the Lansing School District, that Heather talked about, that will start this fall, our equity committee actually did an audit on those materials to make sure that they were culturally responsive for our students, and that there was no harm that would be done in adopting that series. There's a specific rubric that the entire equity committee used to do that. So it was really important to us that, as you're talking about this, and I'm really glad that you're lifting this, that people know that that is first and foremost, that it is a response to the community that we serve, and that we make sure that the diversity of our students is really celebrated in the books that we provide.
The other thing, um, the, um, the thing that I heard also is that librarians, I mean, we should be proud that we've had seven librarians for the last several years, and even four librarians would have been more than anybody else. So this rework of the, of the recommendation is really great, and I appreciate it. The only thing that, that we all know is that we have a shortage of teachers, okay? And yes, things, some things are important, and some things, some things we want, some things we need, some things, you know, some things we can't have. So, um, I think that I would like to, um, as we move along on this, I think the administration needs to have some sort of leeway, in some way, shape, or form, because there are some really, really hard positions that we don't have applicants for, or that are out there looking for a job. They're all employed. So if some of our current staff was doing a job, has a certification in a hard-to-get position, I would hope that we could have those conversations with the union to work something out. Because as we're helping children here, we're not fulfilling our, our need over here, their need, okay? So it's always, you know, how do you balance this? We need everything for our children. We want them to have the best and the best opportunity to succeed. But there are hard choices to be made, and I think, uh, one of the things that, that we have done is, um, listen to our parents, listen to our staff, um, and, uh, we're trying to make the best of it. But keep in mind, again, that, that we have other decisions to make, and it's only one of many. And I'm sure that we'll be presented with other recommendations as the year goes on. So, um, I guess we can feel, feel glad that we have at least come to an understanding on this issue, but there are many more. So thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it. And, um, we'll move on. We'll just move on. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Krem.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and giving us this presentation. I guess going last, after all these amazing questions, leaves me very few, but I'm gonna go ahead and try to field some. So just for clarification, I did have a question on how the training looked, and it sounds like we have a wonderful plan for that, you know? Looks like with the coaches, that'll be for the, for the full term of the year, at least? Awesome. It's good to hear. One thing that I had, a question, or maybe you can expand on for those that are watching, those in the room that we don't understand the importance of the school index component. We went into kind of the, you know, the negatives, you know, being on the partnerships, bottom 5%, etc. What are some of the, I guess, go behind the importance of it? And are there any incentives for being above that bottom 5%?
I mean, I wish you could tell Dr. Rice to give us some incentives, but, uh, right now, uh, you know, this is sadly, it's a punitive measure, but it is what it is. You know, the state, all states have kind of rules and regulations on how they hold their schools accountable. This is the metric that Michigan uses. It's, as you probably can see, pretty convoluted and pretty complicated. And, uh, you know, I guess the incentive is, if you're not on the list, you don't have to be in threat of being taken over or having to do all this extra work. But no, if we get out of partnership, it just means we're out of partnership. Now, the nice thing is, and the most important thing is, it means we're, we're serving children better, and that's what we have to focus on, and that's why we're guided by these kinds of metrics and kind of responsibilities.
Understand that. I guess another on that is, how are we, and do we feel, do we compare to the surrounding schools in the area?
I was gonna say, that, that is one of the, one of the reasons that the school index is really interesting to us, right? Because just as I showed you the comparisons for the librarian numbers, right? We can look at the comparisons across districts. A lot of us at this table and across the school district and in the board, we have connections really across the state. And so when we see, for example, a school that has a really great number, let's say, in decreasing chronic absenteeism, hopefully, I think we're gonna be having one of those numbers as well. Very excited about that. Just a little spoiler alert for all of you, that we call those districts, and we have partnerships with them to say, hey, what are you doing? Share with us the program. Just like we did with the librarians, I called colleagues across the state that were identified on that chart and said, talk me through your process. What do you do? Um, how, you know, how did you reach out to your community? What things are you putting in place? And so I think it can highlight really great things that are happening across the state, and then how we can reach out to our colleagues to see best practices and what we can include. The hard part, though, is every district has its own set of, um, of things, right? Rural, their demographics, whether it be socioeconomic. So there's a lot of factors that we may not be able to duplicate, because it could be very much our tax base. There's so many things that come into this, but I do think it highlights the fact that we can look at best practices and look at our colleagues to say, oh, wait a minute, what's happening over here? Let me call this person to see what's happening in their schools. I know Heather called many colleagues across the state, she's part of many associations, to really talk about that they had adopted the curriculum that we're using, and she said, okay, what are the pitfalls? What do we need to know? What have you really liked about it? And so I do think it highlights best practices and things that we can strive to. The only incentive that I will say that I'm aware of is there is this top 5% that I think is blue ribbon, um, that you can, but I'm not sure if there's a certificate or how that goes. But, um, other than that, to your point, I think in looking at compared comparisons across the state, we can look at best practices and reach out to colleagues to find out what's happening.
Thank you.
One last thing I'll add is just, if anybody remembers, last year, we had a press conference where we announced that our school index score average in the district went up by 66%, which is really quite significant. And that's really through the incredible hard work of Jessica and her team and everybody around here. But a lot of people were like, what does that even mean, right? Because it's just a number that, you know, people are like, oh, did your test scores go up by 66%? No, but, but the district is moving quite significantly on it. But again, it's a, it's a number that is very complicated and is hard to grasp, and that's why I'm glad that you were able to share it. But if anybody has any questions about school index, we're happy to go into much more granular stuff. Plus, a lot of this is online at the Michigan Department of Ed's website.
I will tell you that it's taken us at least five to 10 meetings to fully understand this, to be honest. We've had several calls with our partnership liaison, with Dr. Stalter and with the M D E, because it is very nuanced.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krem, did you have any additional questions?
Uh, the only other question, I guess, with the amended plan, um, does the, I guess, different staffing situation affect the flex hours that we're gonna have? Or is it still gonna be, hopefully, the same plan?
Yes, that will stay the same.
Okay. That is most of them. I do have one burning one for Luton. I wanna know a little bit more about the zip line eventually, so I'll be making a trip out there. But thank you. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you. All I see was insurance. Like, a zip line, woo, okay.
We did have students on the committee, just so you know. Not of the 21, those were our actual parents, but they brought their children, and that was one of their number ones.
Fair enough. I'll take it. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Benavides and to your team for this presentation this evening. We're gonna move on in our agenda to report from Superintendent, Mr. Shuldiner.
Well, good evening, everyone. I think the last thing anybody wants to do is listen to me for more time. You know, it's been two hours, but I do wanna really level-set that two hours. Ever since this conversation around libraries has come up for this district, the amount of time and the amount of work that has gone into this and has been going into this for really months, I hope that the community, both in the audience, but anybody listening at home, or the people, and there are hundreds of them who watch the YouTube later, really understand just how intense these conversations are, but how thoughtful they are. Jessica really should be applauded, and I wanna say from this day as how proud I am of the work that you've done. None of this happens without you and your leadership, and it was because you were willing to have a conversation about what's best for children. That's it. We have to have hard conversations, but we also have to have the time to think about those conversations and make these conversations and talk to people. And I wanna just reiterate again that so much happens in a school district where you're thinking, you're ideating, you're figuring things out. And the last thing we would ever want anybody to think is that something is a done deal or set in stone. And I think a lot of the things that happened, and I'm happy to take, you know, responsibility for this, is just either a lack of communication from the district to the community around the ideas of what was going on. But as you can see today, you're talking about hundreds of hours of work that started, I don't know, two, three, four months ago, that wasn't even finished or isn't even finished, because we're still kind of iterating and figuring it out. Because at the end of the day, we've gotta figure out what's actually best for children on day one of school opening. And we spend a lot of time in the summer thinking about these things. The other thing that I wanna kind of highlight again is what the principal of Luton said. He's been in the building pretty much every day. He said that the libraries haven't been packed up. We showed the district pictures two weeks ago. I really don't know what more the district can do to prove this. If you believe us or not, I totally get it, right? But what I also get is that there's been, and I'll defer to Rachel, who's been on the board for a while, uh, and I'll think of Dr. Rodriguez, uh, sitting next to me, and all, and Garmo, and everybody else. Yeah, there's been a distrust between this community and the school district for generations. First one to admit that. And I hope that today and two weeks ago, and all the things the district's trying to do is to try to earn that trust. But it also gets to a point where we've gotta show what we've got, be as open and as authentic as we can be, and then we gotta put those kids first, and we gotta move. And so I don't know what more the district can do to change the narrative that somehow Luton's cafeteria or library was being packed up. If somebody said it and we, and somebody believed it, okay. Like, I, I don't know what to tell you. We have the principal sitting here, or he was sitting there. He said he's been in the building. He said it hasn't happened. We take time-stamped pictures. You know, it is what it is. But what I think it's indicative of is 20, 30 years of some distrust. And it's funny, I should probably never read Reddit, but I do. And a lot of the stuff that you hear there is, oh, you know, it's the same old Lansing, and then they use things that happened like when I was in college. And they talk about stuff that happened 10 years ago, and eight years ago, and 100 years ago. And all I can say is, we're trying our best. We're really, really spending an inordinate amount of time trying to move this conversation forward. You saw that the thought and depth of the literacy conversation, which is even more important than some of these other individual things, and the proof is in the pudding. The three years, we've raised the grad rate by 23%. We've increased the attendance rate by 14%. We've increased the school index score by 66%. Those might not mean anything to you, and I get it, but it means a lot to all those extra kids that graduated, and it means a lot to all those kids that are coming to school now. If anybody on my team misled you or gave you false information, that, I'm sorry, they're my team, and I'll take full responsibility. But I wanna make sure that everybody understands that at no point is anybody shutting down a library. If you wanna argue that two 775-square-foot rooms versus one 1,400-square-foot room is different, I'll grant you that. I got it. But what we heard from Nicole, Dr. Beard, was they talked to the community, and they really wanted to have these, you know, separate spaces. Okay, great. That's what we wanna do. What we heard from Luton is, that's not what they want, so we'll give it that. Now, the research, what do we care about? We care about literacy. Now, I will say, the theory behind the campus model is actually really sound, because it's about getting kids outdoors. It's about getting kids moving. It's about getting kids to play and move and do all that, do, look at the research on Blue Zones and things like that. But we also know that there's a ton of research on literacy in libraries, and that's why we've got libraries. What those look like, how they are, media centers versus libraries, we wanna have those conversations. But I really just hope that today is one where at least there's engendering of grace for the team. Because my job here is to defend my incredible staff, and they've been taking it on the chin lately. And I just wanna make sure that they know that I got their back. I want them to hear how supportive I am of their hard work that you saw today, and that certainly, you know, there's a lot that we gotta do better, right? The only reason why we were even having those conversations about the school index score is because we had nine schools on partnership. But that's because we haven't been serving the community the way we need to. But we really are trying, and I hope that today helps move that conversation forward. If anybody's interested in the library committee, please talk to Jessica. Please sign up. Please do. And, you know, I hope that we can move forward, and then we could start having conversations on like, oh, I don't know, cellphone rules and things like that, which is probably also gonna be coming up pretty soon for us to talk about. So with that, I just wanna say thanks to everybody. I am apologetic. Uh, sorry about the heat. It's a little bit hotter. It's pegged at 72. Um, we are moving again, because just as a reminder, there's no ceiling in the boardroom right now, and the floors at Eastern are being done. That's why we're not in Eastern, so we're in Sexton. We promise, because we love all of our Big Three high schools, next time, we will be in Everett. Uh, we will let you know what room, because we do want you to see the great, the great stuff that we've got. So with that, uh, Ms. President, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Shuldiner. And we certainly always appreciate having community feedback in the iterative process and hearing from our stakeholders, um, in the process of making decisions, that we can make sure that we are hearing that voice as we are continuing to make the tough decisions. So I certainly appreciate that. Next on our agenda is public comment on agenda items. So we have three participants, um, of the public that would like to address us on agenda items. Um, so the podium has moved this week. It's on our right. It's gonna be on your left, right by the screen here. Um, the first speaker this evening is Sheila Nifin, I believe. Um, Sheila, you have three minutes to adjust the board. The board does not typically respond to public comment, but the time starts whenever you're ready.
It's on? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. This is from the March 7th, 2024 edition of The Gander. State Senators Darren Camilleri and Rosemary Baer on Wednesday introduced Senate Bills 741, 742, and 743, which have been collectively dubbed as the library in every school legislation. Together, they would require every public school in Michigan to operate a library, as well as hire state-certified librarians to look after them. In an interview with The Gander, Camilleri said that he introduced the bills to help boost literacy rates among students at public schools, which have been, which have lagged behind in recent years in tandem with a sharply declining number of librarians employed by public school districts statewide. "We're hoping to fix that," Camilleri said. With his, with this legislation, "we would not only increase the amount of librarians in our schools, we'd also shift the culture around access to school libraries." Michigan's reading scores have tumbled in national rankings in recent Michigan's reading scores have tumbled in national rankings in recent decades, and the number of school librarians declined by 73% between 2000 and 2016. Michigan Education Association officials say the positive impacts of strong school libraries that are run by certified librarians, certified librarians, are much more noticeable in low-income schools in both urban and rural areas, and in schools with a higher proportion of students with special needs. In a statement, Bayer said, "Evolving technology makes those librarians even more essential." Librarians play a vital role in our education system, Bayer said. "In today's age of digital misinformation, our librarians help students ascertain fact from fiction and the importance of checking sources. They are providing our students with skills they will use every day." So politicians, politicians are more educated, empathetic, and focused on getting Michigan schoolchildren access to libraries and librarians than this administration requiring one full librarian for a school population of 300 to 1,499, and two full-time librarian for school pop, I'm sorry, and two full-time librarians for schools over 1,500. Compare that to the current law this administration is citing to rationalize their dismantling of libraries, of one librarian for every 6,125 students. And that stat, that we're only among 8% of those with certified librarians. So because 92% of the state are depriving their students of this overwhelming proven instructional and personal growth benefit, this admin supports depriving our kids, brings to mind my mother asking me if your friends jumped off the bridge, would you?
Your time is up. Thank you.
The resolution before this board does not absolutely nothing.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Cheryl Brand. Ms. Brand, I'd like to invite you to the podium.
Any misinformation about libraries has come from this administration. They have deceived, deflected, victim blamed, ignored, and silenced those opposed to their demolition. They said parents and staff were included in these decisions, but the Luton children attending the June board meeting were ignored, as were the parents from the first meeting. When they asked for previous parent input in the second meeting, three times, they were ignored. It was evident this administration planned to ram these schools through without libraries or librarians, and thank you, kids and parents, for calling them out, as it was the last board meeting that got Luton a library. They said staff was involved as well, but again, staff has been silenced, either directly told to say nothing or the simple continuation of how they've been treated for several years now. What they want or need is of no interest to this administration. Anyone wonder why teachers and librarians have not been stepping up to speak on the kids' behalf? Lansing schools is a toxic work environment where our staff receive no support, demonstrated here again in Willow's classroom library plan, thereby making it the teacher's responsibility and depriving them of the collaborative tool that is a librarian. Not to mention Willow's library is at the end of the hall where the bathrooms are. Admin gave our uncertified librarians four years to earn their teaching certificate two years ago. So they are deceptive in saying they are keeping the four certified librarians, as there actually were six, and it was still understaffed. This district cannot keep or hire teachers, so hiring and retaining the supposed 24, 20 assistants isn't going to happen either. Word gets around fast about toxic administrations. Suddenly, they can't abide dark librarians, although they're the ones not scheduling librarians, or dark libraries. I'd really like to see the supposed after-school programs they speak about. Or the fact that they deliberately understaffed AMPI last year, and now are throwing librarians away to protect those teachers. Not doing what's right unless it's mandated by law. All the things administration broke, they now want to parade for, for even more understaffing than they've previously inflicted, and hiring underpaid assistants to check books in and out as though anyone can run a library. A couple of years ago, teachers had to stay with their kids in the library with uncertified librarians, and now apparently anyone can be responsible for a classroom of children. The community has made it clear upon discovering the past and current dismantling of our libraries that we want full-time librarians. Librarians are a teaching, are a library teaching resource, and the excuse used last year for some sixth through eighth graders not receiving library services because bell-to-bell instruction was required is deceptive. Today's library resolution is an attempt to absolve the board of any destruction this administration seeks to heap upon our staff and kids. So my question is to the board, when none of this resolution happens, who is held accountable, and what are you going to do about it?
Next speaker this evening is Sheila Canturis.
I want to be able to see the people when I talk. There have always been classroom libraries. This is not a new thing. Please stop talking about it like it's an innovation. Literacy is the work of teachers, not librarians. This point is a red herring and detracts from the issue of concern. Reduction of librarian positions and traditional school library space. It's a conflation of literacy work and library science. Librarians are not literacy workers. Librarians direct students to age and grade-appropriate materials. Librarians are trained in library science, which is categorically, qualitatively different work than literacy. And what kind of literacy are we even talking about? Digital, quantitative, narrative? Librarians train students in the evaluation and assessment of content, in research methods, in information systems management, and active citizenship. Accessibility. I guess what I want to say is that the presentation in its digital form... Sorry, but I'm having tech stuff going on here. The presentation, I'm sorry, I'm giving up my, I don't want to give up my time. The presentation in its digital form is inaccessible. Sorry, sorry. Well, it, okay, here it is. The presentation in its digital form is inaccessible and lacks appropriate research citations. The live version is also inaccessible, as presenters sit with their backs to the people, and they're just disembodied voices. I have a hard time absorbing and interpreting the content, because I can't see who is speaking, and you really should have a teleprompter, because we can't understand with the echo in here. And this amplifies the current issue with underserving students with disabilities in this district. I have ADHD. It is, it's a lot for me to process this information. I feel at a real disadvantage when I come to these meetings. I'm concerned about a misunderstanding about key concepts in education, such as FERPA. I was recently kicked out of a meeting about elementary building plans because of FERPA, the LSD rep said, which is both a misunderstanding and a misuse of that legislation, and feels like an attempt to purge the roles. All Lansing taxpayers have a say in how the new schools will be built. It's our money that's building them. I just got my summer tax bill. I know. Literacy is, okay, I already said that. Most definitely, students and families should have input into these decisions, but this is not a school-to-school issue. School communities are transient. They change over time. Why should one community at this particular historical moment predetermine the conditions for all future generations of students? These decisions should be made on, based on longitudinal data, fielded and interpreted by experts. All you have shown, for the most part, is raw data. Much of what we see seems design-driven without real research backing. And why should we aim for the lowest common denominator, minimum standards? Why reduce librarians so we were at the minimum? Is 2025 the year when we begin to aim low? Because that, those seven librarians, that's only until year 2025. We don't know what happens after that. Books alone do not make a library. Books without the mentorship of a librarian are just books sitting on shelves. Cataloging, management of information systems, materials, we're talking about libraries in the institutional sense, traditional school libraries. 21st century learning model, what even is that? Please show us some research. I also want to acknowledge the commitment of everyone here to public education, and I want to thank the board members and LSD staff for your work. We all want what's best. I know you want that, too. Education is a space for the free exchange of ideas, a place for debate. I had to give up my time, because...
Ms. Canturis, your time is up. I apologize. The time, the speaking time is over. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have routine matters. So routine matters we have before us this evening are our committee reports. Our first committee report this evening is our personnel report. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Moore.
Report today. You're fine. Trustee Nowitzki is. Thank you.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met yesterday, July 31. Trustees Lopez and I were present, along with Christina Tocar and Clayton Ross from the administration. We discussed recruitment and hiring updates that are provided on the various efforts to identify and attract potential new staff members that the district's been pursuing. As was already mentioned, the good news is that we currently have fewer teaching vacancies than at the start of the last school year. The challenge is that we still have vacancies that need to be filled. Overall, there are vacancies, more vacancies at the elementary level than anticipated at this point. Special education and middle school teaching positions continue to be the most difficult to fill. But interviews are ongoing to fill open positions, so we're hopeful we close that gap even further by the first day of school. Our next topic was staff orientation, training, and retention. Human resources onboarding is being provided at designated times with multiple new hires instead of individual appointments this summer. Instructional staff orientation will be provided in mid-August. Exit interview data has been compiled for further evaluation in collaboration with Trustee Navarez Martinez. That work is ongoing. Anecdotally, at this point, two recurring items mentioned by staff leaving the district in recent months are that they're seeking higher pay and searching for a position with less stress. Our next topic was grievance data, and there are updates provided on the number of grievances that reached the level for district administrator involvement. Lower-level grievances are handled by immediate supervisors and building-level administrators. We want to highlight that the committee does look at that data with staff. Regarding contracts and negotiations, we had the update that the LSEA contract has been finalized and signed by both the union and the district, so that legal work has been completed. Negotiations are underway with LASA due to an economic re-opener, and negotiations are underway with LEA to reach agreement on a new contract. We had quite a bit of discussion about the board report and frequency. This is the couple of pages that are in your packet on all of the staff changes. We've been taking the feedback from the board and previous meetings and talking about how we might structure a narrative report into the future that could provide some more context and information about the list that you're seeing, which just shows you the names and the separations and reasons. We have responded to the requests from previous meetings and added the gender and ethnicity data in aggregate for each of the categories. So you'll see that for separations, new hires, and tenure. And another item we've been discussing is whether or not the board should be voting to approve the personnel report. That's typically on the consent agenda or as an item. A lot of these items really have already happened, as far as a resignation or retirement, and we're not sure the board should actually be voting on that, and what position that could put us in if we've adopted, for instance, a resignation, which later might be rescinded. So I think today will continue. We have no recommended change today, but that's something the committee will be looking at. It's possible that just the tenure portion is the only item that needs a board vote, and we're not even sure if that actually is a board action. We did also discuss library staffing plans yesterday in our meeting. Much of that has all been covered today. Just to highlight is some things that have been mentioned before, that all of the positions are covered under a union labor agreement that have been proposed. The district far exceeds the Education School Index Guide recommendations. And we looked at previous data, which showed that library positions were increased in the district in the 2223 and 2324 school years. And we talked about the wide variety of positions, including assistants and volunteers that can all be utilized to provide student access to library resources. And then our final topic was a potential contract with Elevate K-12 to provide certified instruction by way of a video conferencing platform. We expect that to be presented at the next full board meeting on August 15. This was a model that was piloted in the district last year as an option to provide instruction when teaching vacancies occur during the school year that can't be filled. This involves a guest teacher who's physically present in the classroom, while the content is presented by a certified teacher broadcasting live and interacting with students from another location. And the contracted time that we will consider would be available to use in various subject areas throughout the district for flexible periods, so that will be coming at the next meeting. That's the end of the report I have.
Thank you, Mr. Nowitzki. And I do know, over the time, we've received guidance. It was NAOLA, and then it was MASP, whoever helped us write our policy, that said that we had to approve tenure, and then the hiring of professional staff. As defined by, couldn't tell you. But that is over the years, where that guidance has come from. But I also think that's a very fair point about the fact that we lumped that all into a personnel report and then approved the whole report, as opposed to just the things we are by statute obligated to approve. So I think that's a really good point for us to ask the policy committee to review. Wonderful. Thank you. Any other, that wasn't a question. I just started talking. Any questions for Mr. Nowitzki? It's your thing, Ms. Williams.
Madam President, thank you for this. First, let me say congratulations to everybody that has reached tenure. Thank you for giving us your time and serving in the district. You are valued and appreciated. Couple of questions. I noticed that there were 23 resignations for Beegman. Is that because they had to go through, they had to resign to go through? So then that means our numbers are not actually accurate, per se? Okay, and then there was another new hire slash termination, and so can we just make sure that we rectify this? And then I have one question. What is a systems administrator?
You can't hear me? No, I can hear you. No, I got you.
You read my lips. Okay, thank you.
No, you're good. A systems administrator, I'm pretty sure that's our technology department, so that's our, they handle our, everything behind the scenes is what I'm going to call it, so network systems, protection software, like, just all of the different technology systems, to make sure they're monitoring when we might have things like, I'm drawing a blank right now, security. Thank you. Security systems. So as we've seen previously in the press, as well as different things, lots of different people try to cyber attack and do those types of things. So we have to have lots of different systems in place to protect all of the data that we have in the district. So they're doing that, along with networks, making sure that the internet is running, making sure all of our software is running. That's a systems administrator. I'm ballparking it. They do a lot of different things, but that's an overarching description.
Thank you. I'll sit.
Any additional questions?
All right. Well, we do have the approval of the personnel report on our agenda this evening, because it is in compliance with our current policies, but we certainly can continue to explore that. That brings next to our agenda this evening is approval of the consent agenda. The approval of the consent agenda includes the approval of the June 4 special meeting minutes, the July 18 regular meeting minutes, the July 20 board retreat minutes, as well as receipt and approval of the personnel report. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Moore, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 7-0. That brings us on to our action items this evening. Our first action item for consideration for the board is to adopt a resolution regarding libraries. I said this earlier in my preamble, that it is completely up to us if we want to do this, if it's something we want to do to send a message about the importance of, you know, drawing the line in the sand about us wanting to make sure that there are standards adhered to by an administration. I will correct one thing in the, in the last bullet point. It says the Board of Education will continue to invest in literacy advancements, including, cross out the word "by," including supporting access to libraries and librarians. So when we have it as presented, it doesn't have that word "by" in there.
Madam President, if you can.
Sure, Ms. Williams.
Correction, that appreciates and values the roles that librarians play in the first bullet point.
All right. So there's, there's a recommended action item on the agenda. It's completely up to the board if they would like to make a motion.
Madam President.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution regarding libraries as presented, with the two corrections we just noted.
Thank you. It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by
Second.
Mr. Crim. Now that we have a motion on the floor, are there any additional questions, comments? I would ask a board member to... comments? I would ask a board member to read the corrected resolution in its entirety. If we don't, if I could get a reader, please. Ms. Williams?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education recognizes, appreciates, and values the role that librarians play in education. The Board of Education understands the importance of literacy and access to print media for all children in the Lansing School District. The Board of Education will guarantee access to libraries, resolving to have at least one library in each in-person multi-grade school. The Board of Education will continue to invest in literacy advancements, including supporting access to libraries and librarians.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any additional questions, comments? None? Okay. We have a motion on the floor. It is a resolution. We don't have to do this, but I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Krim?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Nowitzki?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes. Thank you. That. Motion passes nine zero. Thank you much, colleagues. Next, what did I say?
Nine.
Wow. Seven, and I wrote seven. Seven zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is we have some changes to our board calendar. Our board bylaws say that we will adopt and publish a board calendar within 10 days of our organizational meeting, and those are supposed to be our published calendar, calendared standing meetings for the board. We needed to make some changes to adjust to allow for some schedule conflicts due to some national conferences and some other things that are throwing off our dates. So, we need to adopt a new board calendar for the remainder of this calendar year. I said the word "calendar" a lot in that sentence. And so, with that, we have a recommended motion on the agenda this evening. May I have one presented, please?
Madam President, I recommend that the Board of Education change the previously scheduled meetings and adopt the new 2024 board calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Ms. Moore. Nope, Ms. Williams. Any questions or comments about adopting the modified calendar? All right. Seeing none. I, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Next on the agenda is we have a recommendation for some solar bids. I do see that we have Karen Goldmark in the audience with us from Greenlink, but may I have a motion on the floor, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve solar bid recommendations for Wexford, North, and North Patton Gill, New Patton Gill as presented.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. Any questions or comments? We do have the three bids in our, the three bids in our packet this evening, one for Wexford, one for New Patton Gill, and one for North. These are for the placement of, working on our rooftop solar project. If you were like me and didn't know what EIS stood for, that's our Energy Independent Solutions Partners that we are working with to help us with this project. And I'm not sure if there's any other. I'll share, Mr. Krim? No, I'm sorry, Mr. Nowitzki.
Yes, I have a few questions about all, pertaining to all three bids, and then a few for each specific bid. For all of them, I want to ask if these are grid-connected or they're standalone systems that would have storage capacity?
I'm going to bring up Karen Goldmark from Greenlink Energy Solutions, who is working with us on this project. She can answer the more fine questions you have.
Good evening. As we mentioned, I'm Karen Goldmark, Department of Education, and we work with the district overall in sustainability. So, specifically for these projects, these are grid-connected projects. They're not, it's not battery storage complicated at this time.
Are you using the same equipment at all three? And if so, could you speak to the warranty and the lifespan of the equipment that's expected?
Yes. It is the same equipment at all three. One long is because the actual warranty here is varied. The equipment is really long for the panels. It'll be 30 years, and then inverters have a-
Karen, I actually have that if you want me to do it. Okay, got it. So, the PV modules have a 25-year warranty. The inverters have a 12-to-15-year extendable warranty, and then the racking system has a 25-year warranty.
And then again, for all of the projects, the maintenance and operations, can you speak to that in this proposal or a different one?
Do you want to do it? I don't care. It'll be a separate bid process that, for operation and maintenance. But I will say that the entire operations team in the Lansing School District is also going through the process of learning about this through energy and sustainability, so it will not be solely dependent on a separate company. We're also doing that, as well as our new custodial grounds and maintenance company, ABM, they also have a team. So, we're trying to hit this from multiple different levels, so it's just not a silo, something that's learned in a silo. And we're talking about involving students in our CTE programs as well.
And so, will there be a live monitoring of the system?
Yes.
And would that be public or private, you know, information for the district? I'm just curious how we might-
That's a great question. I'm looking at her. I'm like, I'm not sure. I'm looking at Ben. I'm not sure why we can't make it public. I mean-
I mean, as long as it's not proprietor stuff, we'd be happy. Although, I mean, I really don't want to go down this road, but there is some question about safety and security of knowing certain things that the police and federal officers have been questioning. So, things like we don't make our water systems public, we don't make our electricity public, but I could imagine some cool dashboard where we could show the power we're making, and I'm sure we could figure something like that out.
So, maybe the next month, we could see how much power we generate.
Exactly, exactly.
And then, if you could break down for each of the three arrays, what is the capacity, you know, planned for the array, and then what percentage of the site's energy is expected to be covered by that array, and then also the projected costs, just say the first year, what we're expecting to save with that?
Sure. So, for North, the solar size for the kilowatts for the DC is 558.6, and for the AC is 320. The initial electrical bill savings for the first year projected is $62,333. The 30-year projected electrical savings just for North is $2,718,111. And then 30-year net savings with the tax benefit after costs and going for operations and maintenance. So, that'll lower that because we'll need to contract some of that work out, would be $1,403,998. For Wexford, the solar size for the kilowatts for the DC is 229.7, so this is a little bit smaller, and for the AC is 150. The initial year savings is $33,657. The 30-year projected electrical savings is $1,467,667. And the 30-year net savings with the tax benefit, and of course, after contracting out for operation and maintenance, is $914,852. For the Patton Gill build, a larger size here, we have some, it's a larger building. So, the solar size for the DC is 630.4, and for AC is 480. Initial savings is $84,192. 30-year savings, $3,671,278. And then the net benefit after operations and maintenance contract, $2,375,477. So, net savings for all three, we're looking at about $4.5 million for these three over 30 years.
And then, I believe there was one more question you had, which is about 1% of the EIA consumption?
Oh, yep. So, for North, it's 148%. For Wexford, it's 55%, and for Patton Gill, it's 155%. So, we're actually generating more than is required at two of the locations, and just over half for Wexford.
So, a follow-up on that then. Does that excess energy able to be distributed to other BWL accounts or net metered at each site?
That is a phenomenal question, Trustee Nowitzki, and that is something that we are having conversations with Ben. Would you like to jump in on this one?
I would love to. And if anybody from BWL is listening, we would love you to give us a real good rate on that energy. But this is actually one of the things that, I know we are late, but it's actually a really amazing thing to talk about publicly, is that because of the tax incentives and because of the technology, is that we're going to be able to make on some of our buildings more energy than we need, and we are looking at ways that we can actually sell that back into the grid or put it back into the grid to then offset other costs within us. That is an ongoing conversation with BWL, and we certainly would love the board's support in advocating vociferously for the school district with BWL giving us a good deal.
So, currently, they treat each school as a separate account, not as one district account.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. I appreciate all the information.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you. Great questions, Mr. Nowitzki. Any other questions from board members for the motion on the floor? All right. Seeing nine. Oh, nope, there it is, there it is, Mr. Krim.
It's getting late. I had several questions that you've helped answer, so I'm only going to ask just one. I know it's getting really late. If you just want to talk on the mention of the risks for the amount of projects that this company can handle, if you just want to elaborate on that.
Sure, absolutely. So, first, I'd like to start off by saying that Absolute is a local company. Actually, all three companies that bid on this were local companies, so it was absolutely great to see them. They're all based out of Lansing or the immediate, like, outer Lansing area, so that was really, really great to see. Absolute has done some work on some projects locally with municipalities. They've worked with BWL. They've gotten some of the BWL contracts. I believe, as people have heard, that they've gone out for different solar projects. The initial concern potentially was, and with any bidder, is when you're bidding multiple different sites or awarding a contract for multiple different sites, is do you have the capacity to be able to handle all of those? After going through several conversations with all three of the bidders, it was determined that they will have the capacity to handle all three of these, but as you know, we have nine additional projects upcoming. And so, when that comes out, then we're going to be considering the diversification in different bidders, because not really any one company can handle that large of a set, but it's felt that Absolute can, especially with EIS, which is basically like our construction manager for solar. So, if you think about, you know, Crispin Company helps oversee things for us. Plant Moran helps us oversee our new builds. Think of EIS as that with Greenlink in there as well. And so, they've done this for a very, very long time. This is what they do for work, and they'll be managing the timelines and managing the targets and working with them to make sure that they're hitting everything.
Can I add one?
Sure, of course.
Another reason that Absolute priced it as the best option is that they were proposing directly to be the company doing the work, whereas some of the other bidders essentially were bidding and saying that they would have subcontractors do the work for them. So, that actually made some of the other bidders, it was less clear whether they'd be able to deliver, whereas Absolute is the company that is going to do the work at their place.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Any additional questions or comments?
I just want to speak to the resolution then, to say how excited I am to see the district doing this and to taking the lead on this in the area. I have not seen other, you know, districts investing in this way, especially at this level. So, I think congratulations to the staff and consultants we've had to position us again as a leader in sustainability efforts and converting to green technology and renewable energies. We know how critical this is for the climate, for the health of our students, and we also see the financial savings of it. So, it's a win all around. I hope other districts and organizations will look at this model and start to follow and learn from us as well, and that we'll continue to see more of these bids coming for the other projects we have in the pipeline. So, full support for this effort.
Thank you.
And can I add? And to add to the tally of our relationship with Greenlink is we were actually just awarded yet another $4 million grant for green energy stuff. So, thank you so much for saying those positive things, Dan. I think this district over the next couple of years is probably going to be one of the major leaders in green technology in this country, so.
Thank you. All right. Seeing we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you so much. All right. Next on the agenda, we have, it would be, we have new business, no new business, no additional discussion items. That brings us to our report from Secretary in Announcements, who, I have Ms. Moore pitch-hitting for Dr. Rodriguez.
Yes, I am, filling in for Doc. We have for, excuse me, our August 1st Secretary's report, August 19th, teacher's first day of school, August 21st is the first day of school for our students, August, woo hoo, yeah, woo hoo. August 30th, no school. Our next board meeting will be August 7th. It's a special meeting, and I think it's a recap of, or not a recap, but second half of our retreat. Yep. And the locations for our board members are still to be determined. August 15th, we have a regular board meeting, and September 5th, we have a regular board meeting. I do want to note that our special meeting is on a Wednesday. And that concludes my secretary's report.
Yes, and I, we probably need to correct for the record because special meetings and emergency meetings mean different things, and so this is actually a retreat. So, it's a board retreat. We're just having it during the week. So, we'll make sure we correct that for the calendar and the record. Yep. Any questions for our pitch-hitting secretary, Vice President Moore this evening? All right. Seeing none. That brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. We had two speakers registered this evening. One was Sheila Contreras wanted to address the board, but I see she is not here, so I am going to bring up Ms. Sariae Strode to address the board. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I know it's been a long meeting, so I appreciate everyone that's still here, and great shout-out to the community for coming out and expressing their concerns. My name is Sariae Strode, and I have had the great decision to be a candidate for our school board this year. I have a deep commitment to our students and parents. My priority plan is to focus on elevating their voices and to shape an effective and inclusive environment. I bring an experience of extensive background in child development, education, social work, and currently as a data analyst specializing in those metrics that we talked about this evening. My background uniquely positions me to address the challenges of our schools faced and to support those data-driven decisions and having those crucial conversations, like the ones we had this evening. So, today's presentations were very inspiring. I thoroughly enjoyed them. It was very clear that we do have a deeply dedicated community that has great conversations surrounding our libraries, our schools, our metrics, and I thank you all for the hard work in just bringing that information and education to the forefront to be, again, a board that is able to address the concerns and address the community in a positive way by giving them the voice and understanding. So, I just thank you. I think we are going to have a great school year. I have a daughter in this district, and I'm excited to possibly serve with you all, and so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Strode. That brings us to comments from board members. Any comments from board members this evening? God bless you. Next, we have adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I recommend that the Board of Education adjourn.
Thank you. It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Ms. Williams. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero, and at 8:50, we are adjourned.